All right. For the World of World Live, we're welcome to the, what's today? It's the feb-- January?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. City Council Retreat for City Port Orchard. And this first hour this morning, we devoted to you and your council retreats. So Sophie, our facilitator, if you haven't met Sophie yet, Sophie Glass from Triangle Associates, she helped us last retreat. Did some homework last night, and she created a chart of our committees and our council members. And then we have our hat, we have some other committees or responsibilities, I guess. They're not necessarily three-person. These are the three-person committees. These are the other things that other council members do do that aren't necessarily a three-person committee. And we need to recognize and capture these duties also. Do we want to start over here? Do we just want to start over there? What are your thoughts?
You're missing one. Kida.
Kida. You're right, there's Kida. Okay.
We can get creative about how to fit this in here.
Yeah. This came, it was not Sophie's fault, it was mine. I swear we were the phone last night.
Yeah.
Yep.
This line, you just think of the--
There we go.
Are you also worried about the alternates for, does I mean alternate on her?
We've got, we have some alternates too. We do capch-- we'll capture that somewhere. Again, if you're right, there are some alternates here. Then KISAP 911, I believe is one of them. So if you want to write that. I don't even think it needs to be on the chart. Just you just capch-- Brandy, Brandy's got to capture it, sure. So that it goes on the resolution that we passed in weeks or a half. So KISAP 911 is, what else is there that I've missed?
Public health.
Health, public health, that's right. Public health. And these are the my committees that the council members are backup to.
And who's the alternate for that one?
Currently, it's John. This is John is also doing that currently. So you may-- Public health or central.
Oh, we're going to hear for--
Yeah, I had to go with the same. So do we want to tackle those other committees before we do this? Or do we want to tackle, and I know we took the liberty, I've heard from a number of you that we want a transportation committee this next year. Is that an idea?
Maybe quarterly, but not necessarily.
Well, I think that the transportation committee needs to be a major committee, and I think economic development tourism can either be disbanded or--
Okay. So maybe that if we want to reform these committees, that the composite, whoever's on that committee determines the, you know, obviously you guys can determine work plan and frequency and your chair would be derived by that committee and how often you meet this up to you guys serving in your committees. That's what guys suggest to others.
Do that, do that for me.
This is, do this first? Okay? Is that the consensus? Okay? So in the past, we've, you know, you're for sure going to have one, you're likely going to have two. If you don't have two, you'll probably have other responsibilities on these other things. And your other responsibilities hopefully are all fit on one hand. Not, but not necessarily for all of you.
What's that? Can you--
Utilities.
Utilities. Is it sure or sure as?
That's, that's, okay. Utilities now comes with utilities. Utilities is sewer water, stormwater, and it also comes with SAC.
SAC.
We all know that SAC, so Sewer Advisory Committee is another one that, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And it's two committees, it's multiple, that has multiple meetings there. So that's a little more often there.
Same people though.
Same, if it's the same body though. Yeah.
I think the right, let's just become a bit more about it.
Sounds pretty certain.
I've been on that committee since I did a lot of it, so since 2014. Initially, the first major action we took on that committee was developing our web finding system. And this committee took funding on that and was working with our citizens group to do the web finding. Then we created an event toolkit which we got on the city website through the clerk's office. We then developed a tourism and strategic plan which was to help help out. And our partners know what kind of tourism activities we were looking for. We hosted, we spent a year hosting the Roger and Burke seminars, their webinars for the business community. And then in the last two years, we've added the business organizations. But the work we've done, we've been at a loss for agenda items many, many months. And I would recommend that that go to a quarterly meeting or you find through economic development to do. Because we're not really doing economic development in that committee. So I think we need to define exactly what you want that committee to do.
My consensus, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you. It is the one place where the merchants association and the chamber and it--
And that's only recently, that's only--
Yeah, in the last two years.
And that's why I thought we need a forum for them to be able to come and speak with us.
That, that would be my concern.
Doesn't have to be under that title.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. Just because that's the title we've already always had doesn't mean it's one you need to keep. And again, I don't believe that we do true economic development in there. I think we provide a place for the business, the merchants associations to talk to us and we do some tourism stuff, but besides looking at our strategic plan every year.
Business, is it more of a business liaison committee that we're, I mean, let's, let's talk about these names of these committees so that it's reflective of what they're doing? Because that's, that's really what we're doing is providing an opportunity for the business community to sit down with council members and share their beefs, you know? That's, that's a lot of what happens there. Like that--
That actually ties into festival chimes and lights because most of the people in that community are from downtown, and that's where we get a lot of connect about what's going on. So maybe it's seasonal, right around the winter that they split over.
I think, I think there isn't, there's definitely a connection and maybe lightsack and utilities that chimes and lights, wherever it's at, should be, you know, one of those members should, that should be on that committee, whatever we call that, so that it's, you're making that connection.
And if we're going to leave the title economic development, someone on that committee should be our Kida representative.
We had a sustaining push with marketing, so we can't forget that.
Oh, that's correct, we did.
And I have some thoughts later in the writing about public information and you're there, so.
Actually, I was thinking, and I agree with what you're saying, that it isn't a true economic development, but what I was hoping was to leave from something like communications or outreach, and that could be outreach to the merchants associations, also to the public, but also to commuters. And what I'm thinking is, one issue that we don't like here, or feel we don't need to, is parking. And I hear from it from both commuters and from merchants, and we hear from other people who expect that they should be able to park downtown when they go to Seattle. And to me, part of that is formulating policy, just letting them know, we don't envision the water from this whole thing parking for going to Seattle. We have other options, these are where they are. And as part of outreach, I've been thinking we could do more with social media, email lists, and I think the clerk's office is doing a really good job of that, but we could expand their reach. The city's Facebook page is a great place to put information that, you know, is safe to put out, it's based on press business, and it can be augmented when we share it to other groups. So I would actually suggest--
What I'm hearing is a public information and outreach committee. Before we get to John.
My view, I would change the name of it, is you narrow the scope, and if you wanted to track down what that committee is responsible for, or you keep it broad enough that it felt as talking to commuters, talking with merchants, talking about, I mean, we just approved a contract with a, you know, review of a plan for the entire downtown, not that this committee is going to drive that, but this might be a conduit between, you know, the merchants in particular and what's going on with that. I, this is a lot, we've got some stuff ahead.
I just want to be real clear, particularly if you read from last year, what we talk merchants, we're not talking just the Port Orchard Facebook, we're talking the entire suburbs.
The other thing I was going to say is that you mentioned maybe going to quarter. I don't think that these things necessarily have to be on a monthly basis. I mean, I love seeing the guys in the emergency, sit around, have a cup of coffee, let's pull it over, it's somewhat fun. If there's an issue, then--
You might need to meet twice a month and not meet for three months after.
Exactly, or you might meet quarterly unless something comes up. If you want to, proper notice, you can schedule something more frequently.
I was just adding, economic development's absolutely the right name. For example, when we're talking about parking, there's a parking element to economic development, so it's going to reform, you know, perhaps policy changes forward from, that might be moved on to land use, land use, splitting it for a lot of different options. So I think I promise the guy actually did the right name, and I agree with you, it's not just about downtown, we don't have any involvement from merchants outside of downtown, it's bigger than that. For communications handling, it's a byproduct of that committee, I don't think we need that communications in that name, there just needs to be a communications element to whatever plan that is put together. Obviously, the mayor's going to talk about communications later, and that's a whole nother thing for the city to, 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 I think, economic development purpose.
So maybe, maybe there's a need as these, you guys, after you guys assign your committees and have your first committee meetings, maybe each one of these committees needs to write a little bit of a mission statement of what the responsibilities are and report back-to-back, and they get buy-in from the full council. And as Sean's saying, there's a communications piece probably to this economics piece, and maybe, and maybe it doesn't need to be in the type, in the economic development committee, but I think it needs to be bigger than it is.
The other thing that Sean said that I agree with completely is maybe issues fall under multiple committees.
They do.
And so they, you know, so they can be looked at from a variety of ways before they get to our work study where we make our own decision.
And at our directors' meetings at times, staff come to those and go, hey, I've got this issue, which, do I take it to a committee? Do I take it directly to a work study? And we make a determination many times that, yeah, that belongs at that committee or this committee, or it touches a bunch of things, so let's just bring it to the committee at the whole. And, and so, you're right.
You also raise an interesting point in that, you know, we have work studies, and that's where we can talk about an issue as a whole body, not necessarily a committee. So things that go to the committee are, maybe should just simply be, if there's some question or something that we need to verify, but really that's why we put that there, maybe in the month of study, without a lot of stuff that is outside of work or business meeting.
And you'll have, you have to be interested depending on what perspective you're taking it, so it's up to the council to listen to all of those competing perspectives and try to make a difference.
But sometimes the work study is really quite packed, and so it's, the committee's sort of vet.
Correct, you're right.
They just go to, to prioritize.
Yeah, yeah. And remember too here, transportation has been under land use, so we're taking some lift off of land use. And I don't know, Nick, tell me if you're--
Not at all, really.
I mean, we've, first two years of my administration, we did ninety percent of our code. There's not, I mean, we've got park plan coming up, and we've got some, some studies, what are they?
Sub area.
I'm thinking sub-area plans that we're working on. Those are huge and important bodies of work that are going to land here. But they're, you know, it's, I don't believe the workload here is going to be what it has been in the past, other than most sub-area plans and the parks plan.
Just not to pick on any one particular committee issues, I know recently some of the boys in Lakeview's committee faced up with that, that vacation of the climate, or what it means to the council. We all jump in with, well, this or that, or information or whatever, so it's almost like, I appreciate you guys having the timeline, but it really was decided by the full council in a first second.
And there are definitely some issues that come to us that I think should probably at least land first on the work study.
The challenge is that a lot of times we're looking, staff is looking as they write their staff reports from, and it could be, there was no consensus at the land use committee or the finance committee, and that's fine, but we're, you know, a lot of times we're looking for, that there is consensus to bring this forward before we put a whole bunch of staff resources.
Well, hopefully that wasn't an obvious issue. We had very, very bad people days, the bottom line.
Yes.
It shouldn't have ever happened, which would come to the idea, use the right information,
we carried forward, we deployed it in good place.
Yeah.
It was the one for me experience, was it?
It was, and, and I, you know, I hope, I mean, Charlotte was getting her wet, teeth wet at her first council meeting.
I saw more change in her gypsy shy in the last four years.
Yes, she, I, I think that we've, we've raised a ball.
And now we all--
We raised a ball. So, Scott and Fred.
My vote is to keep E D T, to keep it monthly, and so that we can be agile for it.
And I agree with what Beck said, if you're a member of that committee, you should also be the candidate, I just make sure.
Yeah, and you had--
So if you're signing up for one, you may be signing up for the other.
Yeah. And I recognize it's not economic development in its true sense, but it touches on a lot of economic development aspects, especially as given to us by community, so that's my vote.
Okay. Historically, what we've done, and this is your process and your meeting, we've done it on tenure first, and they went up and went one, two, and three. And then from there, if the world's perfect, we only have ones in every column, it never works that way. If we can't discuss it amongst yourself, you know, and figure out the distribution, then we're prepared with, we've got ballot sheets and a ballot box, and we will, you know, we can resolve any boxes that have three and four or five people on them from that standpoint. Does that seem to be--
Yeah, I recommend before we go to the ballot, allow people to explain why they want that committee, why they--
What, what you're interested in and what, yeah.
Can we, can we talk about what transportation is? Is it inside the city, outside the city?
It, I think it's, I think it's, it could be a liaison to the county, I, good luck.
Is it on the list? Is it, is it--
Sorry, I'm commentary. I mean, gosh, we went to that meeting, oh, two weeks ago and, and scratch it. And that'll be an issue we're going to need to take up, how to, how to deal with that at that committee, so that we've got some issues, the county not dealing with transportation, that could be at that committee. And I think it's going to be looking, we've just got, you know, our pockets picked, I'm trying to be politically correct here, with 997. I mean, we, we lost the little bit of funding we had. We should be putting four or $500,000 a year to street maintenance. Actually, I've got a plan that says we should be a million dollars a year, and we had 200,000. We just lost the 200,000. We've got to figure that out. We've got to figure out bigger issues like Bethel Corridor, and are we going to run a, talk to our community and run a ballot measure, maybe? We've got Flower Meadows South, you know, semi-south, I mean, there's a lot of issues.
Transportation. I introduced this at economic development here several months ago, and I introduced it at finance, thinking that the transportation committee needs something we want. I agree with everything that the mayor has said. We need a transportation plan. I realize we have our six-year tick, and we have our, you know, we have those things out there, but we as a council have never sat down in a room and read those transportation issues as they come up. And we need to know when we're going to ask for what type of funding and have all of that in a, in a, you know, well-vetted. So I just think that more work can be done, and I think initially with transportation, you will spend a lot of time just on education to find out what your revenue sources are and what your requirements are.
And not to advocate for somebody, but I think it's imperative that Beck ends up on that committee because she represents us at the Peninsula R P T O, she's our trans, trans hall representative at E S R C.
And the passion.
And has a passion for it, so I'm just--
All is in favor of--
So.
I think there's a couple of public works initiatives underway that are leading to that. And then also, I don't disagree with the things that you're saying, I think it's both intercity and extracity involving the county. We went to a county, you were there and I was there, the mayor was there, and they were really checking the box with their, their county. But a noteworthy footnote is that they have finally issued R F Ps for looking at their impact fees, which is, is an update that hasn't occurred probably in 25 years. And that'll have triple effects on the county throughout the city.
Okay, so let's narrow this back to this, our transportation committee and questions related to that.
Well, no, it would kind of relate to transportation committee and committees over here. I think historically, years ago, I'll say this, and people may feel wrong about it, that, you know, there was the, the counties on the east side, and then there was KISAP, we're kind of like a small dog. And I know with the mayor now getting to the adult head a lot of Thanksgiving, that it's more vitally important that we realize that we have to be at a table at our, at our committees, but our committees are now impacted more collectively, globally. And if we're not at a table, we're going to be on the menu more and more. So when we sign up for these, we think about interactions, not only locally, you know, we talked about transportation, but there's also a larger component at county level, and even possibly E S R C and state level.
Also, I think there's an opportunity to reset relations as the Rose Deputy Director is retiring here in a couple of months, so I think there's a real opportunity for that.
There's, there's an opportunity in November too, but I don't know if he's going to take that challenge.
Eric, you want me to pass out markers?
Yeah, they're in a moment, John, they asked that they get, so let's, let's, we're running out of time here. We're quick, we, and you're going to give your elevator speech, two minutes or less, what committees you're interested in serving on and why? And then we're going to go by seniority level, you're going to get a fabulous pin from Sophie, and you're going to write a one by your name, not somebody else's name. You're going to put a one, two, and a three. You're likely not getting three unless there's a whole bunch of competition on your one. So who wants to start? John?
Yeah, I can, I can start, and I would just suggest if, if Beck doesn't disagree, let's put around with transportation committee, not going to try to put it down by somebody else's name. I would say my number one, number one choice is the finance committee, mainly because I've got lots of experience in that regard, which is something that I'm interested in. I would, I'm not sure if I should at least acknowledge or apologize, that I don't think it's necessarily appropriate for me to be on the transportation committee because there's a potential conflict that there's to be, certainly a resource, or if it's a transit, will be a resource, whether or not they can bring me coming in to provide my recommendations to me for me. So, and I don't know that two or three--
So are we filling, filling these in for you as I'm talking, or you--
I, I find that is, that would be financial, that would be--
John wants to be, so we're going to license you on here. John wants to be one. He's not, he's--
No, not anymore. I would just go where, where--
So, so beyond, you know, beyond that, you're not care other than your one, okay?
Her strings are number one.
His, his, his one. So Fred is the second most tenured council member?
I appreciate what you've done on finance because I, I like getting the overall picture, and you actually capsulated very nicely when you tell us, like, yes, this guy is going to help. And so in that sense, I like the holistic groups of finance and utilities, but I think my passion is really more, and I'm not sure which committee it is, the ones that have more outreach to people who complain. And that could be--
I think that what we're discussing is that economic development tourism is going to have a broader umbrella in that area if you're--
But I also like, I've also been very concerned about land use, for example. I'm concerned about what the, the counties proposing for the campuses, how it fits in with existing residential neighborhoods or dozens. And--
So would you say that--
Which one of those then is your one and which one your two?
That's, that's a good thing. I'd say probably land use is one, and economic development would be two.
Okay. From there, city, I think.
Utilities, really a passion of mine, yeah. I, I think actually it takes so long to learn. No, one never catches up with utilities, but--
But we're still trying to.
I know, right? I actually really enjoy it, I love stormwater, anyway, sewer. So I'd like to stay on utilities and of course chimes and lights. Probably something, I mean, that, chimes and lights is tourism in a way, but it's too big to be--
Parked.
Yeah, it actually is. It, it's growing and it's changing, and, you know, I just told the committee, I don't think we even have time for, we have to keep at it all year this year, there's so much going on.
So maybe you're thinking that you would just be on--
Those two, I have--
Because this, because this is such a large bite?
Yeah.
And I would almost say, we can make an argument too, half the year, this is a pretty big bite too. The self, self-checking, only half.
And the nice thing is, I, I hear you about, you know, Kida and economic development. I also know that it has been a really good tool for me in just keeping up with what's going on.
So you're interested in Kida?
I actually am, and I, I hear you saying, and I see the value of economic development in that part of what we have to consider here as we're talking about what goes where is how much time everybody has.
Correct, and that's why we put this other board up here, so that we're recognizing those other--
Which is, you know, you probably should have been under economic development tourism. You see how they're kind of falling together? So I'm actually, it's pretty--
I think we're good there for now, and we might need to come back to everybody to fill in some holes, to round out the committees.
Yeah.
So from there, Beck?
And again, I definitely raise my hand for transportation. I'm very active regionally in that. And finance is my second, and you all know I've sat in the finance committee for a while, and my background in banking, I think, leads, lends that to be a good fit for me.
Agreed. And then you also have--
Oh, yes.
--members over here that we'll talk about.
Maybe that was--
Yeah, Sean.
Yeah, I think number one, I'm in finance, I can say that that's my day job. I think I really enjoy being a part of that interface with finance department, really able to understand all those complicated reports and provide value to that committee. Number two, I would select economic development. Also be happy if North Church wants to, to be that Kida, and take that responsibility to, we'll get that later.
Okay.
And there's nothing to say we can't have some people going to Kida, I'll say to everyone.
Yeah.
Morning.
Okay. It's you.
So land use is my first choice, I enjoy it, it's also my day job. And I'm interested in transportation, so that'd be my second.
Rose, Kevin.
Utilities. And I'd say it would be transportation, since I think that transport right now, I'll look at that.
Okay. Seeing, so it looks like we've solved, we solved finance, we solved transportation. Could the mayor advocate our utility committee? Mr. Clausen, you served on that for many, many years, and I think some of that historical perspective to SAC and the city could be valuable if I could twist somebody's arm.
Sure.
Would anybody disagree? Is anybody else passionate about that committee that would want to get one in there? But I think John brings a lot of historical knowledge. But I think John brings a lot of historical knowledge, and also is a member of the finance committee, um, which we've often tried, or trying to find ways to pay for this, and you know, there's also a link there, so I think we solved that. Um, economic development, uh, here and land use, is there some, so Sean's got two, Beck's got two, and more of that, Scott's got two, John's got two, Cindy, you got times and lights, we're kind of, here for everybody, I'm kind of looking now at my more retired folks.
Wow.
It's because it's a time, because now we're the time, and, uh, that's probably three people. So Beck's doing time with transportation stuff, so now, um.
Yeah, which one do you want to be on?
He is.
No, I mean, you know, I.
So, and now development and land use, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to be fair about.
If you want to split, I would prefer economic.
Okay, we go on to, on to, on to land use, because I'll be doing one for me, that's a good thing.
Okay, so we got Scott and.
And Beck wanted to do land use.
No, I don't like it all, so it's basically, so three, okay.
Three.
Wow, this is probably the easiest we've ever done this, ever.
I'm very impressed for the record, I need to.
Um, so now we're over here, and we've got a couple, two people going to KITA, that'd be great.
And if that's not, another, another people really easily want to do that, I just, I just raised my hand, but.
Yeah, no, I think those are two good, I think we're good there, we've got festival, times and lights, KRCC, we have a seat there right now that Beck and I are sharing that?
KRCC is, is important, um, I, I'm going to be vice chair next year, so it would be really nice if you guys would want to.
And I would appreciate it, because if she doesn't go, then that's going to fall behind, so, all right, thank you.
And, and I have a seat on KRCC, I'm like, hey, God, so it's not appropriate.
And then PSRC, that Beck, that's, that appointment comes from KRCC, so Beck automatically has that if she's here, and the RPTO, Beck, once again, that's Beck.
He's going to be the chair, so she needs to be there.
Yeah, so she's likely to share that, and then on lodging tax, Jay has championed that cause for the last.
Done a fabulous job.
Fabulous job.
Very good, Jay.
Thank you, the junior wherever it is. I, I actually, I've got to be honest with you, first year was difficult because it was learning and stuff, and obviously you all were not excited about what we came up with, and last year, uh, it went very well, and it really did run out of a stream with your hair on fire, so I'm going to go ahead and share. Yeah, I know, so I'd be more glad to do it again.
Now, we only need one on that.
Correct, we can only have one.
Okay, so then, no.
That's done.
And these are none too.
We're done, our work is, we did this in four minutes.
Now, alls, alls, alls.
We need alternates, there we go, and not over there, but over.
Well, just for clarification, can we not have more than one on the festival, times and lights?
Oh, absolutely.
No, but we do have a resolution that only designates one council member, so we would need to update that resolution.
Does it need score, it's got, this isn't only one computer, we designate all of.
They can, they can do, they can do whatever they want, this is why they're not making a resolution.
You know, I don't want anybody, Cindy's been doing a great job, and certainly support her staying here, but if anybody else wants to participate, I'm sure she'd use the help.
Yeah, we, we tried that, and, you know, it's fine, it's whatever, it's mostly.
So is anybody dying to become a times and lights committee member?
I say just ask for help, or, or.
Yeah. But you know what?
You're awesome, Adam, do you need a backstop?
I'm not advocating, I'm just saying, there's an option, anyone is.
Okay, KRCC right now, so Beck, what we've done in the past is Beck and I usually never miss at the same time.
But you have two seats.
So we have two seats and an alternate for the pair of us, so we're only having to keep one person up to speak, and Jay's done that the last two years, does somebody else want to be an alternate to KRCC? I think Jay's probably had to go, well, twice, I was going to make three times.
Yeah.
Is that right?
All right, that's a matter.
Jay is an alternate. Is, oh, that's not, he's an alternate, oh, look at that, green, enter an alternate. PSRC, um.
That's appointed through KRCC.
Uh, yes and no, um, we now have our seat at the executive board.
Oh, the executive board.
Uh, because we, we've gone up, so we can do whatever we want, and I believe Beck has those, she is the representative, uh, to, and has those relationships, I would advocate that Beck be my alternate on the executive board.
Very good.
Yeah.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think, yeah, 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 back, here we go.
And that's the executive, yes, there are going to be assignments on, that you're correct, that come from KRCC, and I will likely be giving up my group mentor policy board seat, and the, I've, I've heard that Inver Johnland is dying to have it, and, so there'll be an alternate, need for an alternate, if anybody wants to serve as the alternate to that, you can call in, you don't have to attend to give it or when you're the alternate.
Who's the, decides that, who decides that?
We, they will ask for volunteers, and, and so we, at KRCC.
Who's they?
KRCC, KRCC will divide, these are, these are the other small states' seats, so it's divided between us, Inver, and Pulse Boat, and it's nice to know if somebody wants that, because we're going to go to that meeting, and, yeah, we've got somebody that is willing to do that.
So for Baybridge, is it Michael Scott that is, it's just you know?
He, he is not on the council anymore, that's how I got the seat, uh, because they wanted it to be, well, actually, it was between me and Ron DePierre, and I felt that listening to Chris Ron, it immediately.
Yeah, there's also.
Ron's not on the council anymore, so there will be a different Inver member, and, and speaking of equity, they don't have any seats, so I, I, I believe if they want it, KRCC's going to give them the seat, and if we, and how you typically get the chair seat is your, the, um.
The alternative.
The alternate usually slides in if they want, so whoever's on, it should be, if somebody wants to do it, it should be somebody on our land use committee, because it's land use activity, um, between Scott, Fred, or Jay, and, and you know, we can say we're not interested if, if you're, if it's a time commitment you guys don't want.
Well, I, I just may have a work conflict with that, at times, so.
Yeah, because it's a, it's a day.
Yeah.
You get to write with Commissioner Wolf.
Yeah, I've, I've actually, when I was Michael's alternate, I didn't have to do it, but I was able to call in as well.
And that's, that's an option.
Yeah.
So, you interested?
I had to check with my boss.
Okay.
Is that your wife or someone at work?
Both, so I answered both.
If there's a lack of interest by others, I can be that.
Okay, why don't you do that and, and report back to Beck, because Beck is the executive board representative, and they're the ones that are going to make that recommendation to the full board.
Executive board.
The executive board at KRCC.
KRCC.
KRCC, executive board, there's too many.
Should the, to be clear, uh, Councilor Ashby is the representative on PHRC's transport and the alternate of the executive board.
Right, yes. But again, KRCC has to affirm that.
On their February 2nd meeting, yeah.
Yes. The other thing, when you talk about the alternate for growth management, the growth policy board, Pulse Boat doesn't really have a lot of seats on these committees either, and they may be seeking that, because Mayor Barrettson spends a lot of time over there on transportation, but she's representing for some transit.
And when, when I said that, she said, oh, I've got a council member that wants it, and I said, yeah, but you do a lot, Becky, and I bet Paul, Baybridge is going to want it, and I mentioned to Baybridge, they also said they want it, so, so it might be a moot point whether Scott wants it or not, or her interest, we'll report back. Okay, can we finish our work?
Health district, nine one one.
Okay, well, my alternate for health districts and nine one one, somebody, John, the reason I reached out to John in the past is, there's a link a little bit to transit, as far as the information.
You're walking away, he's so.
So, anyway, if there's anybody.
I think every, you can, since it's such a heck of a challenge to do this, I haven't attended any of them yet, but I'm.
But that's the health district, and the council board.
And the alternate, we have a lot of that.
And you know, to be honest, I'll, I'll throw one out here, for nine one one, we could send our police chief.
Oh, that's a great idea, all in favor?
I feel like I should have shot up early.
Yeah, that, I like, I like that one better too, because otherwise, we make decisions that affect the police department.
Absolutely.
He has seats, more engagement in what's going on in nine one one.
Yeah.
Good choice.
Just crazy thoughts jump in my mind sometimes, it's, it's the voices.
So I'll take Councilor Clausen.
Yeah, and he's just back to health.
Yeah, just help him in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That is very, I, that was very good.
Well, thank you, so getting this through that, I mean, it was a challenge.
You all have very complimentary interests, Derek, would it be helpful if I just recapped from the beginning of the conversation what I heard?
Yep.
So, the main things that I heard around economic development is better than fiber mission, which apparently you can do at your first meeting with mission statement, but the different topics I heard was communication, focusing on downtown, but also not downtown, outreach, commuters, parking, being a liaison to the person association, and a liaison to the chamber of commerce, are random or bold points that you all want to look at at your first meeting, did John remember it?
The topic's great.
I think the one thing that came out loud and clear was the, the realization that of, there may be one item, there may touch multiple committees, and just to be cognizant of that, we'll do our work, and so works better. No, no, I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, but that's something that, I mean, just to give a little background, the transit had three committees per year, and I found myself sharing a lot of the same information to two of the three committees, and we finally just said, let's go to a work study, and get rid of the committees, because it was a committee in the hole, and it's worked out quite well.
So we've got to balance that, you're right, when we can, and there's time, just take it, if it doesn't need to go to a committee, take it to work study, because the, the rub for us is, you know, whether it's Noah, Mark, or Nick, you know, we're taking time away for, to conduct your guys' committee meetings, we need to make sure that it's relevant, and if we don't have subject matter and a reason to meet, you know, let's not meet, and that's the staff liaison working with your committee chair as to what, what the work plan is and what your agenda items are, and it's easier to cancel meetings than it is to schedule them, so maybe it's, you know, you've got to set a schedule and, you know, a process to cancel.
Where will the streets fall?
Transportation.
They're actually in.
But come out of land, that's what I was referring to earlier.
That will actually be the conditions of streets, and that's where they.
Probably street vacations are good.
Surface paving, repaving, sidewalks.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, now what about a street vacation? Is that, is that land use or is that transportation? I, that's, that's probably land use, because it's, is it needed, uh, for public benefit?
Yeah.
Okay.
The metaverse on our transportation, I heard, the new committee, I have heard, focusing both inside, but also outside the city, uh, the financial losses as a result of the issue in nine seven six, issues around the metal store, or flower meadows, uh, transportation plan to complement the six-year tip, uh, impact fees, surfing, and paving.
And I would say, um, what, grants we're pursuing?
Grants.
Grant opportunities, the timing.
Yep.
You all have a busy year, didn't you?
I, I, the timing's perfect, because of what we got on our plate.
Two things, one is just to remind everyone what our role is, our role is policy, not telling the mayor how to run the city, I guess you have to tell the mayor what, but he gets to decide how the city does the day to day, and secondly, what stuff goes into one committee, I'm fine with it, I would, the end numbers suggest that we look at, which is the appropriate staff person, so if we're not having multiple department heads, you know, if, when you mentioned vacation, is that a, yeah?
It's, not on our.
Or is that a mark?
Yeah.
Who is going to be the primary staff?
I mean, it's the primary here, but he's going to bring Mark into the hole when it's necessary, this is Mark, um, this is Mark, or it's, it's not really Mark, it's Jackie, it's probably Jackie.
My, my point though, Rob, is that when you said when necessary, if we can reduce some of those when necessary, is by making sure that the catch-all subject isn't the appropriate committee to begin with, so.
Yeah.
As an example, street vacation, would it be better to have that in transportation, because Mark is the one that's going to deal with it, Mark is going to staff transportation versus we put it in life and land use, and then Mark has to come with it, it's just not, I'm just looking at.
Right, and I, I hear all that, and I agree, I also think that there's going to be a learning for the transportation committee, and so some of the things that land use has been doing, such as.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a period here of, it suggests that we all keep that in mind.
Historically, it's primarily been Brandy, but the economic development activities have come from Nick's, so Nick, it comes to us, and Brandy's there too, handling the festival stuff, those applications, so this, this has touched a couple, and this is Noah's only responsibility, so we have to.
Well, obviously, it's, yes, since she's been out of the room, and Noah will be assigned to all, but we can reverse that, since she left the room, we could assign him all.
Yes.
So then, oh.
Go ahead.
The only thing I have remaining is your next steps, should have done it there, okay, so it sounded that each committee gathers at the start of the year, it'd be helpful to create that mission statement, to determine the frequency of meeting dates, knowing that it's easier to cancel than schedule, uh, figure out what issues are most appropriate for work studies versus for committee meetings, determining which issues really belong in which committees, and asking the question early on, uh, similarly, which staff person really needs to be there because of limited staff capacity, and then a specific follow-up, Brandy, we're going to look into the times and lights committee designation to see whether it's.
It's consult, because there's only one.
With it is a great, so then, what was in your to-do list, was there anything else that?
So primarily, though, they're going to need to establish, first is, first time your committees meet, who your chair is, work on a, um, frequency, your meet, establish a meeting schedule, good luck some with that, and, because you all have different work schedules, and then, lastly, if, as appropriate, develop, uh, somewhat of a mission statement and what topics this committee tasks, works with, I, I, I've already kind of worked, I think we know who the staff folks are.
Well, since we made very much today, we identified those first meetings in January, so Brandy has, that can be part of the agenda next week.
Perfect, or.
All the same, we're going to try to work it together.
If we have time today, great, if, well, then you're going to miss the work study, so today would be the best time.
We have six minutes.
We have six minutes? Got anything else?
That, that's it.
Okay, that's.
Well, I guess finally, because I appreciate we've tried it for consistency purposes, but they will definitely schedule it monthly, do it in the evening, or council meetings, or finances work really well, beyond that, it's really, as needed, and that gets back to the comment about, do we be quarterly, and then add to that when necessary, you know, that's something.
I'm going to let you and your committees, uh.
Well, but I would also say that I would be looking at this, because.
Yes, so.
They can come, starting our discussion on solving some of these, like our mission, you know, Noah has a good understanding of what's coming up for the future with the finance, and he can kind of lay that out for us, and then we can argue with you, resell it and bring it back.
So get, I would say, lunch, if we have time at lunch, if we're not working through our lunch, that's a perfect time to get with your staff, liaison, and, and.
I think.
Figure out your first meeting, figure out your first meeting, at least your first meeting date, you know, your first meeting date, that would be about, should be your homework assignment. Okay, that's it, so we got a couple more, we're waiting on Mark and Debbie Lund, we've got a few minutes here, uh, and Charlotte and Chief Brown, you can come sit at the big kids' tables if you'd like, um, I think we've got enough chairs, one, two, Mark and Debbie were one short, we'll, we'll sit Debbie in somewhere, they'll, we're all showing up last, I guess, is.
Maybe a fifth chair.
Well, there's only three at that table, so.
Yeah, that was purposeful, we'll, we'll put HR as always. Yeah, that was purposeful. We'll put HR, as always, we'll put HR next to me. I know that Chief's leaving after he gives his presentation. I'm going to go first as soon as we pick it off. And then we're going to go to the.
Oh, I still think you guys have something.
And, uh, you guys take the white hat back.
I thought everybody was, yeah, so serious and tired.
Always, I love that word. Yeah. All right, we're back at the Port Street City Council's retreat. Staff has joined us, the council members. And so I'm going to kick off, so we're going to give brief presentations. And this, the State and the City report that I passed out to you is something that I've done at TOPSA at their board meeting. And I gave it at the Chamber of Commerce last week. This is something that I intend, a presentation I intend to give. And the last page will eventually get tweaked based on what you guys, the priorities we set here. So I've got some priorities on there, but they aren't necessarily the city's priorities until you guys buy in on it. So I also plan, so I plan to give this, a presentation like this with this material to an all-staff meeting, a couple of them. I'm thinking a couple of town hall meetings as we work towards establishing our budget priorities. And then service clubs throughout the year. So I won't dig, dive too deep in this. I'm open for questions. You know, the second page was guiding principles. It's great work we did a year and a half ago at our last retreat. I don't know how many times, as we were selecting consultants, working through a process, we've got this on the wall in our conference room. And Jay Rosa Pepe more often than not hits me over the head with it and says, well, we need to do it this way because that's raising the bar or whatever. This is really, really a great tool. And I'm proud of the work we did there. Jumping to the next page, things we did. I don't know that I need to dive too deep into here. You guys know what we did this last year from Tremont, our parks. You know, we finished, we completed treatment on well nine, we're drilling well 11, 13, McCormick lift station. And many of these projects are still ongoing. I, next page, I've talked to you a little bit about the challenges we have related to turnover. I think it's primarily related to the economy. It's a tough job market right now. It's tough to keep good people. Mr. Dorsey knows very well, he's lost most of his management team this last year. So we've hired good people though, but it's challenging to get new attorneys and new staff. There's a learning curve. So, but I'm very proud of everybody that we've brought on board this past year. Jumping to our priorities, and these are just the items that are in our 2020 work plan and budget. From the base street, pedestrian pathway right-of-way phase, continuing to grow well 13. We've issued that contract for the McCormick lift station two, Marina pump station design. And we've got, as we all know, we entered into an agreement with McCormick Communities that we've got to bring well 11 online, so we've got to get that design done this year. And in the next budget, we're going to have to find dollars. Noah's going to have a big sale or something. And we're going to, because we've got to bring that well online. I think we've invested heavily in technology improvements and just creating efficiencies. And I think that's going to be a theme you continue to hear in others' presentations today. The downtown master planning, we just approved that contract. We're kicking off the parks plan here next week. Community center, we're talking about the RFP for that on Tuesday night. I think that we need to start talking about the marquee and what we're going to do with that. And that'll feed into the next budget. I hope to see a mixed-use groundbreaking somewhere downtown. Might for sure be Holly Coffee's property in Cheers and maybe other sites too. I think it's imperative that we retain Kitsap Bank in our downtown. They seem very committed to doing that. Where that building is still is not completely decided. And I tweaked this one, the schools. I think it's at high school before, and I don't know that we should be saying that that's a new high school. I think we need to be supportive of schools and their needs and whatever that is. And that's for their policy board to drive what that is. Mark and I got, or Nick and I got an email, Nick, from one of their school board members, matter of fact, this week, one of their new school board members. Wanted, you know, since the South Kitsap pool is a community pool, he wanted to know what we were doing to help the school district make repairs to it. And nothing. It's not our fault. So that's not really what I said. Not too far off, though. Let's see, the mental health navigator, you guys know about that. I think going forward, we need to do more of that. And the 1406 funding, we're getting close on that contract. And that funding's actually a little more than we thought. It's around $4,000, not, you know, we thought it was around 32 or so. So we've got. And we'll work, and we were just, as I've shared with you last council meeting, we were just, yesterday, I believe they voted on it. We are, us, Lakewood and Renton are now principal cities at PSRC. So next month, I will be at the big kids' table. Uh, yes. Okay. I've got a slide here just to continue that conversation. We've got a work, we've got money in the budget this year to start the designs and the work plan for city hall improvement. This is just kind of a list, and it's not all encompassing, but there's a lot of stuff wrong with city hall that we need to address. And I'm just trying to educate you and the public, you know, because it's probably going to take a bond issuance of, in the three to four million dollar range. We won't know until we get all the specs done.
Did the other city hall bond just mature?
This year.
In 2019, right?
In.
Sorry, 2020.
2019.
2019, yeah, middle of last year.
2019, yeah. So it's on, and that's the, these are 15 to 20-year improvements. I think that's an appropriate way to pay this is with a mortgage or a home improvement loan. And then we have the ability to then capture those, that expense and drive it down into our enterprise funds.
I have seen lots, see again when I read it.
Yeah, sure, we'll look into that. We'll look into that. I'm so stoked he needs to put that on the board or not. Just, I've got a slide here. All the stuff, you know, I sit on a lot of boards, a lot of different places that I'm engaged in the community. You know, in the last couple of years, I've got a seat on the Association of Washington Cities Board. I'm now going to have a seat at T G Sound Regional Council Executive Board. I believe, and I'd like concurrence from you guys today, that that is a priority. That I, because if you look at the next slide, the clerk's office tracks what I do, believe it or not, since I'm a public employee. And you can see how many meetings I go to. And that citizens appointments, or, excuse me, the citizens appointments. I remember my first year in office, and the first six months, everybody that didn't get what they wanted from the prior mayor needed to meet with me, you know, about their street light, their pothole, sidewalk in front of their house. You know, that tapered down pretty fast. A difference too was I wasn't engaged at the regional and state level the way I am right now. And I'm not in the office as much. And so somebody coming to the front counter in 2016, I was likely in the office. And when they were really upset about something, and I was handling a lot of those complaints firsthand. Right now, if they walked up to the front counter, you'd probably be lucky to get on my calendar in two weeks. And it's just the nature of, you know, meetings in Olympia, Seattle, Spokane, Walla Walla. It's not a short drive. And many times the policy board meetings are rarely in the city hall. So, you know, in this last year, you can see the outside board meetings and local agencies grew a whole bunch. And I think Jay and Beck in particular, who pick up some of those other outside agency committees because there just isn't any more time in the day. Planning for the future, this is the slide I think that's going to change a little bit as we, after today and we established some priorities. What I see out there is keeping up with the growth. We just learned, matter of fact, some information about this new reservoir. That reservoir at the top of Sedgwick is, you know, it's going to need to probably be developer paid for. It's, we're at capacity at that reservoir. We thought there were some onesie-twosies out there, but we had a 200. Nick's going to talk about development. I don't want to dive too deep into that. And where some of those things are happening, but there's a couple of major projects out in that city, etc. Sydney area, whether it's the sewer lift station or this water tower, either one of these big developments, their connection fees are far greater than the infrastructure that needs to be built. So it's solvable. It shouldn't be a McCormick situation at all. I hope not. But this was new information Thursday. So, Sydney sewer needs to be solved. We have all kinds of stormwater challenges out there. Transportation, we just formed a new committee. We should continue to advocate for interchange improvements. Anderson Hill Roundabout, I continually hear about sidewalks and improvements needed in the Flower Meadows and street. I bet it starts with a stormwater facility. I think there's an opportunity. The Rollins have a piece of property that's about 25 acres down at the end, down there. Let's, counties got a great, they've historically, they're doing regional stormwater facilities and they make it a park around it too. So I think there's an opportunity somehow to do something. And we need to start with finding a piece of land and starting that planning because we can't fix the street and the sidewalks without stormwater improvements. And got to maintain our existing streets better. We all know that. It's just finding the money. City Hall, Public Works has needs. We're buying all kinds of expensive equipment, anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars apiece, and the stuff's sitting out in the rain. And so we've got to figure out where we're going to store this stuff and put some inexpensive buildings. But we still need these buildings, a new library. I know we just approved a contract for the leaky roof. And parks, we're kicking off the parks. And social issues. I wish the federal state government was putting more resources into this stuff. But unfortunately, this is, much of this is going to fall on us and we need to start what that looks like. I know we don't have dollars, but I think it starts with the navigator program that we've learned a bit about here and putting more resources into that. I believe in our next funding budget that the fire district will likely partner with us. And we could be sharing that expense. So we're probably doubling the commitment that we have. But we would have a navigator in South Kitsap, five days a week versus the two to maybe three days a week that we have currently. That's my presentation in, I hope, 10 minutes.
Real quickly, two things that I thought you might have asked or discussed, and I thought we did at the chamber.
I probably did.
One was the PFD I O A. I didn't see it on here.
Okay.
I think that's a pretty good deal.
Okay, the PFDs I O A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it drives a lot.
Yeah, and you're going to see that Tuesday night.
Right.
And we're, how many of those phases? Four of those phases in the I O A? Three and a half of them. So what we're proposing to do, and I'm going to go visit PFD Monday night, talk with you guys Tuesday night, we're going to, we issue one RFP. Nick doesn't have the bandwidth to handle another project. This consultant will manage from determining where the, I think we need to back up a little bit and make sure that the developers chose the site, okay? We need to back it up a little bit here and make sure that's the best site because it's now the public's process. And we need to look programming, the financial viability of this, all the way to 100% design. And so you'll get some of that bodywork. I just condensed today.
No, no, what I'm trying to say is, well, I can't remember what it said. We're blowing the city's horn about things that have happened. I think that's tremendous, getting us to number one on PFDs.
Thank you.
On that one. I think it's truly worth mentioning.
Yeah.
The second thing, I don't know whether you want to mention it or not, but I think it is worth mentioning is that is the black letter words, agreements that you and staff brokered between McCormick, Bermerton, and SKA, Fire and Rescue. Because that in itself is.
And there's more work to be, I would say in the current, it's completing the ILAs for McCormick Communities. And we know that's a priority. We've had meetings with McCormick. And we still have, how we're going to credit them, not reimburse, credit them, the improvement. They're drilling the pilot hole for 12, but we have, there's all the other infrastructure to go with this. There's transportation to resolve. There's a number of elements. We've solved the crisis. There's more to do.
But again, as you go out and talk to these organizations and you take this on, you know, you talk about these road shows.
Yes.
You know, the police are worth bringing them up because we're not hiding them. We're actually addressing them and we're taking care of them.
And you're spot on. I did dive into that deeper outside of the circle. I didn't think I needed to, I guess, shoot my own horns in this.
No, no, I was talking about, this is what you're showing.
Yes, and as you were aware, you were at the chamber meeting, I dove deeper into the things we've done and the things we're doing this next year. I just didn't feel it was.
No, not for you.
Good use of time.
If you go out there, you can put it in line here because that's what we post this on our website.
We are.
People are going to see it.
Yep, and I think it's McCormick's in here, isn't it?
I didn't see it.
I thought I saw it.
It's, well, it's McCormick Lift Station two. I guess I could have.
I think there's work to look at that. Anyway, that's why I think in the report it's worth.
So in 2020, I guess it's a good point. I'll make a point here.
This is a junior council member.
No. McCormick agreements. You know, and important, I think it needs to be in the current issues. Two is, I don't know, I'm not in social media, but I heard about it yesterday. Our friends in Annapolis were just making a monstrous issue out of us doing emergency repairs. We didn't close the road. St. Cole developed, we saw it, we identified it earlier in the week, just don't happen. We're just constantly playing defense. And I think I've got some solutions. So really the issue is public information, public, yeah, public information. P I O in particular. And I think we're not ready. We are ready. From a funding standpoint, we can't afford or have a place to put another employee. And I think we may need to identify some funds, $25,000 or so, to put to a contract. And just so that we can get out, and this is just an example of public information. It's, we've got all of these plans that Nick's doing, from the parks plan to the downtown master planning. There aren't enough of us and none of us are skilled in writing press releases. And Jeanine does a fabulous job putting the content that we give her on our webpage or on social media. But it's time to write that stuff and the expertise. It is just not a skill that I have or anybody else in the city hall.
I was going to move on, Mr. Martin.
Sure, sure.
As far as planning for the future, to me, you raised a good point. Can you touch on a couple of things in your message here? The first one is you're planning for facilities and so on. I think there needs to be some more time with discussion on the future staffing. So we have P O four, Robert, going to the P I O. But it's always like, here you've got this need and was that, and we're out looking and going off of this, you just said that thing. So that's what I mean.
And I've missed it, and I already have the answer to that, is we've, you've. And I missed it, and I already have the answer to that, is we've, you've approved a body of work for salary subject duty survey. And we are, we plan to, with to marry with that, we're going to hire a consultant that looks at making sure that we have the right bodies in the right places and what our staffing should look like three to five years out is our goal.
I agree. It's kind of like Jay, if you're more of this, put it down so we can keep the focus. So that's number one. The other one, I just raised it and you touched on it in your bulletin here. But, you know, there seems to be a growing interest in discussions about our car footprint. We've all read about what Major Simon has been doing and what they're continuing to do with their technique for oil. But we're also, you know, the governor is pushing for a greater environment. I know we've heard that sidecar transportations, recent vision, the state of the U.S., that is an issue and it's compelling. So it's something that you talked about, evaluated, so available to City Hall and things like that. But we need to take that discussion, I don't know where we go.
I drove here and I left your car.
At a greater level, so it goes constantly just to City Hall, whether it's something that we should encourage developers or is it something that we should look at from a fleet mix? I mean, there's a number, if you're expecting, just something that I think we should be talking about, at least all be on the same page with it.
Good point.
I can comment. Yeah, there's strong. So there is a climate change component required of our program this year, which I'll talk about later. We also just adopted a charging station partner requirements for all new developments as part of our code in March. And I heard just yesterday that 2020 IBC or 2021 IBC is going to have requirements that all houses be built with D48 fun in all garage phase and so for vehicle charging.
But, you know, we've all heard, and I'm not taking a position one way or another, I don't know about the budget, but we've all heard discussions. Seattle County is, I guess, spelling camera now is you can't build with that capacity anymore. You have to build by your own, see like. I heard Major Jalen was across the border, was doing a recent issue with the Senate Committee about where can you get all this knowledge? So it's a big issue. By no means do I have answers. It's something that we should bury our heads in, we should at least look at and talk about.
Okay. Be mindful of time. Is there anybody? We've got a lot, lot many more presentations. I was just a teaser. Okay. Our chief is going to go next because he's got a commitment after this. He's going to disappear. And then when our judge and court miss fair show up, the judge asks, he's just going to hop in and give their presentation and take off. So I'm going to sit down and shut up for a while.
I want to thank everybody for bringing this up with me. As you know, I've been here for about six months on video passing six month anniversary. This is a kind of a good time for us to check in, especially to check in with you. The past documents out to everyone. So the big blue monstrosity is the EMAP. That's a long executive management assessment. And as through WASPIC, we don't need to go through that. I've got some highlights, but I want to talk about what we've accomplished over the first six months. There's a copy of my presentation in there. We'll talk about what we did in the last six months and where we're going in the next year. But I had any answers that you had at any time if it freaks out. So one of the first things that I did when I got here is I sat down with staff. I spoke with a number of you, spoke with the mayor, went out to as many community groups as I could put up with me. And we established a new mission for the police department. For me personally, I think that those things are important because if we don't know where we're going and we don't have our commander's intent, then we're just doing things that we as individuals believe are important and as a team of professional peace officers, we've got to know what our mission is. So working with everyone and working with the community, this is what we came up with. Our mission, the Corroche Police Department, protect the lives, property, and rights of all members of our community. We'll work through this crime and the fear of it, while remaining proactive and innovative in our approach and enforcing the law. Our community shall know we are members of all members of one team for our transparency, accountability, and engagement. And again, we worked with a lot of people to get to that point, and I think it really sums up who we are and what we need to be doing to get our mission accomplished. The other thing that we needed to work on too is our vision. Where are we going and where do we want to be as we move towards that? So the mayor and I worked on this, command staff worked on this, and again, speaking with members of the community because we worked for them, we wanted to know where they wanted us to go. So this is what we came up with collectively. Corroche Police Department aims to be amongst the finest law enforcement agencies in the state of Washington, one which consistently delivers the highest quality of service to make the city Corroche one of the safest communities in the state. And the key that I think that we came up with is to say amongst, a lot of times we see places, say, we want to be the best. Okay, well, once we achieve that, then we'll do it. And I think it's also not really very appropriate to tell other teams that you've phenomenal work, but you're better than that. We can be amongst the best, but that means you still have always work to do. So that's why we chose that. And finally, I think this is another big component. We have to have a shared set of values. Again, when we walk out that door to go commit acts of law enforcement, keep our community peaceful, what's in, what's in our heart and how do we get confidence? So I spoke with a lot of people, get on a run, one day spoke with every single staff member and all volunteers. When I said, when I asked them, I said, what are your values and what are your department values? No one had any, at least we don't have shared values. You know, there was some word salad on the wall, we don't have shared values. Okay. But what are your individual values? As you go out and you put this uniform on and you work out, what are your individual values? What's interesting about this group of men and women is that every single one of them came up with these three, which is service, honor, and integrity. They came up with teamwork too, but I don't want to include that. That I think that would be a good acronym. But this is what we live when we walk out the door. So we have started putting this on our cars. We talk about this. Anytime we're sitting in command staff meetings or we meet with individual officers and we talk about behaviors, whether it's good or bad, how does we need these three values that we share? And the other thing that this does is it drives us away from being a policy based agency. Meaning, you know, I need to sit down with this council member and we're going to talk about some behaviors that he had and it's policy 306.4, line six. This is what we buy it. Instead, I can say, sir, in your behaviors, did you do in service to your teammates and to your community? Were your actions honorable? Did you act with integrity? And if you can say affirmatively all of those three things, the policy is really a guideline and it makes it easier for people to go out and do their work. It's a very, very emotional shift from what we had before. And I think that's a positive one. So here's what we've done the last six months. Again, policies and procedures and systems are important to me because I think, especially in my business, and I know probably the city's business, I'm learning, that core, that skeleton of the organization is what allows everything else to function at a high level. And we recognize that we didn't have that as tight as we probably needed to. So we have been updating our policy on a near constant basis, but every two weeks we parcel out a little bit. We've been working with council, we've been working with the guild, individual command staff members and the rest of the agency. And we were using a program called Lexible. Lexible is based out of California. And what they do is mostly a delivery system, but what's nice about it is they have defense attorneys write all of the policies and they stay up on current state law, case law, federal law, so that I don't have to. Because if you trust me with that, I may miss something and then I'm not serving the community and I'm not serving the team because I missed some weird case law out of the ninth circuit and it's not being moved. So this allows us to regularly update without putting that on the, myself and the deputy chief. We've redefined our leadership roles. So we have myself, the deputy chief, and three sergeants. And there was a lot of things that were being done by individual sergeants that should have been done in the command staff. Because we want our sergeants out in the field, working with their team, mentoring them, and making sure that things are successful out there. And it's our job as command staff to do stuff like policy and maybe work on internal skeleton systems. We've got a gun on training. We've added about 21 or 22 hours just this year in training. A lot of it is stuff that's required by OSHA, a lot of the stuff is required by our insurance company. And what this allows us to do is instead of spending training dollars for people's seats, we can have them do it while they're working. So they can take an hour, they can go through it and it fills those requirements. Been working very, very closely with Miss Wong to ensure that our civil service commission is doing what we need them as a community to do. We can't hire people, we don't have appropriate civil service rules, and we don't go to them and say, is this working? Is this okay? Because the whole purpose behind civil service is that you don't have an old boy network where I'm like, hey, I know Jay, Jay's a good dude. Guess what? You're caught. I don't think you need this one. Sorry, I bet you feel, I bet you don't want me to make that decision, but.
You got to fund me.
But what you'll see from that is we have a staff member who's now doing a significant amount of time working on our recruitment. We are able to recruit for our composition now. And you're going to start seeing us out in the community, doing some of those things, putting stuff out, probably giving brochures to hand out to try and bring good people here. We're also doing some, some better tracking, both on our internal assets and our training to make sure that we're meeting all of those goals and meeting the expectations. But we're also tracking our use of force, our pursuits, our critical incidents, our complaints, collisions. All of those are being reviewed at a higher level than they have been before, so that provides us an opportunity to really analyze, okay, why do we have five collisions? I think the year before I got here, the last seven cars, five cars. And we have to be able to look at.
How old is the newest car?
Oh, also, yeah, absolutely. This is the most expensive one. But we have to really be able to sit down and look at that and say, okay, is it because we're not providing driver's training? Are we not educating the public enough about, hey, you need to stop when the lights are on? We just had a collision the other day because somebody said, well, I thought I could just go around you. Nope, nope, we need you to stop. That's why the lights and sirens are on. But we need to look at that and say, all right, is this a problem that we need to fix? Or is this a problem with education? Why are we having all these things? And it's the same with use of force or any of these things, these other critical incidents. And finally, what we're doing as well at policy reviews. And those are really being more of that analysis of critical incidents. If we have an officer that's going out and is using force in a rate that is three times higher than the next person, we have to be able to look at that and say, is that actually a problem? Because it might not be. It might be that he is, he or she is just working in areas of the city that for whatever reason has higher violence or some other issue. Or is it because he's not very good at talking with people, the escalator? But we have to look at that and really analyze it, and that's the system that we put in place. So this next piece talks about the EMAP. So I just got to Mike Painter, who is the professional services manager for this organization. He was one of the people that actually approved me to come here, and that's what this blue document is for. They came in with a group of five subject matter experts from around the state, and they did a very, very in-depth look at the police department. They looked all over our policies, our procedures, our systems. They interviewed just about everybody within the city, so within the department, they came and talked to some of the other members of the city that we are involved in. And I've come up with five things that are significant. Everything that's in there, we're going to be working on. And again, please take some time and read through this EMAP. So here's what, here are the big things. We need to, this is what they look at, is the administrative standards of our authority, use of force management staffing, records, property evidence, and then your operational standards such as patrol investigations. So these are our critical areas that we need to address. Supervision, we're already working on. We came to you and asked to take that open position and create a sergeant. With the deputy chief and myself, again, the command staff members, we are not supervisory. We don't, we should not be responding out to calls for service unless they're critical instances. We need to empower and train our people to manage the people that they manage and serve. So I appreciate you allowing us to do that. That's going to be big, that's probably an issue. The next section is the management of our property and our evidence room. When I got here, we, the mayor and I, chatted about it quite a bit. There's a significant capital cost to bring the property up to what would these criteria standards? There was some movement prior to my arrival to co-locate that with Kitzak County. They're only three blocks away. They have all the same functions and they have all of those improvements that we would have to make. And we can just move our staff member, move our property evidence up there and share facilities. It's not unheard of, where I came from, Pierce County, Tacoma PD have been sharing since 1877. So it's not an unheard of thing and it's going to be almost at no cost for us, aside from the actual movement of property as a whole. Should be figured this out.
If we hadn't done that, we were looking at something north of $50,000, make security of the frugates to our evidence and storage space. And by doing this move, we not only don't have to spend that money, we're going to be able, when we look at remodeling City Hall, we gain some space that we're storing evidence in that.
How big is that now?
Not big enough, but we dig its space. It's.
Probably about half the size.
Yeah, half the size of this room.
And it's got a vault that we can use for other purposes as well. But yeah, I mean, we were looking at upgrading access, upgrading for cameras, alarms, I mean, there's HVAC and significant amount of capital. Our records management, we work with Randy. I would say between Mark and I, we probably get the most other records requests out of the entire city. And in order to be able to manage that, we have to manage the records as well. And there were some things that we needed to do to be able to tighten that up. Randy in Sydney, who was our office manager, sat down, we were starting to move some items from upstairs, stores down to where we can manage them. I know we're shortly going to be doing a scan and toss that will help us a lot with our own case files. And then the entire region is actually working on a new records management system for law enforcement records. That will be coming out, we're in the middle of some data testing right now, probably beginning of next year. But it's a major, major change. And also part of that is we're going to be doing paperless probably within the next month or so. Just so you understand how big of a deal that is for us, if I write a report, I write it in the database that everybody shares, I have to print it out, I sign it, I give it to my supervisor, who signs it, and then gives it to another staff member, who scans it back in to the system, and then they have to walk all the way down the hall and put it in our secure storage. And if anybody ever needs that again, they then have to walk all the way back down the hall, find it, retrieve it, and bring it back. And when you start looking at the amount of time it takes, I mean, it's only three minutes, let's say, for you to go get one case report, but throughout the day, I ask for 15 of them. And I, you know, we don't have any visual media storage for our evidence. So if I need, like, for me, this is my computer, I don't have a CD or DVD drive in this. So I have to go to my office manager, who then has to go to the property room, get a CD, bring it out, take it to another computer, put it on a thumb drive, and then give it to me. Because we can't have our records shared and merged on some of these other servers. So that's a piece that we're working on. And finally, the provision, the estimation of authority. Again, as you'll see in the executive summary, the city ordinance right now, there's some things that we need to add in order to make sure that all the pieces of what we do as a police department, what we do as a city, we're legitimizing. Again, getting into, the biggest piece for us right now is our organizational structure. As it stands right now, like I said, we have two command staff members that are finding internal processes, kind of guiding and mentor supervisors. But out in the field, we only have three sergeants, a day shift, swim shift, and graveyard sergeant, and they all work for five days. If they don't have any training days, they don't get sick, and they never want to go on vacation, we only have supervision on the street two thirds of the week. That means on the weekends, when we have the most calls, it's up to a senior officer who's got no leadership training and no authority to make a lot of big decisions. So they end up calling people at home, and what we truly should be doing is having a supervisor in place that can answer those with a higher level training and a higher level authority. And additionally, just by the nature of it, because we have a lot of staff members during the day, my day shift sergeant supervises a lot of people. For those of you that are in leadership positions, the span of control should be about five to seven, because after that, you can't really be with anyone. And then you start seeing significant problems with behavior though, because the supervisors just don't have time to help people. And if we can get things early, then they're not problematic. So what that is now, you guys have helped us with this force sergeant, again, that'll be a huge one. We're also working towards changing our schedule, and that's something we'll come back and discuss with you guys, to be a little bit further in our plan. If we are able, with this force sergeant, if we are able to go to this new schedule, that allows us to get up to about 82% shift coverage. And we will also be going to a demand based staffing. So what we do right now is we say, at 10:00 in the morning, we'll have. So what we do right now is we say, uh, at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, we'll have two to four people on, and then 3:00, or 2:00, we'll have four people start, and then graveyard come on at night, and we'll have two to four people. It doesn't take into account that, if you look at our statistics over the last three to five years, do we really need that many people on? At 4:00 in the morning, that's 1% of our call volume per year, per week. But if we look at our swing shift hours from, say, noon to nine, and we're getting slammed, the guys cannot catch up with their work, you might even only have two before we come on. So we're gonna change that a little bit, and we'll, we'll come to you guys. Let's, uh, figure that out. And then finally, as we continue moving forward, um, so for 2021, um, we're, we're working on this plan, but, uh... We're, we're working on a plan to, to bring to you. So again, it's about 100% supervisor coverage. What we would like to have, four sergeants, four corporals. And corporals are just a, uh... They have higher level of leadership training, but they don't have as much supervisory responsibility. They have no ability to discipline. They don't have any of that. But they can be the person who is legitimized as a leadership or in a leadership role when the sergeant is on. Uh, and we would also most definitely be asking for a fifth sergeant. Again, we have, uh, an investigations unit supervised by the day shift sergeant, who also supervises court, who also supervises department enforcement, and has to then also roll the road. Uh, this would give us 100% supervisor coverage and allows people to do the work that they need to do with the correct supervision, with the correct leadership, and allow us to adapt to what is changing. I don't have the statistics for you now, and I can bring some other things to you. Our community is changing, and we've gotta be ahead of that. Uh, we've already kind of discussed the management of the property and evidence room. And again, there was significant capital improvements. Uh, where we are at right now is, uh, we've already met probably three or four times with the county. Council, council is reviewing the, the contract that we are going to be proposing. And again, it's almost no cost to us. Our staff member can go up three blocks, work up there. Uh, the, the cost sharing is gonna be based upon our use. So, I mean, we still have to buy bags and tape and all the rest of that. And we're also looking at going to the visual community of the plan. Uh, this is a big piece for this year, and this, this comes down to our training. So we have, in, in order for us to get caught up with where we must be for training, um, and this is based on federal requirements, state requirements, OSHA, our insurance carrier, uh, and then again, best practice in our industry, we have 96 hours of training to complete for each officer within the department. That's not professional development. That's not recertification. That's being trained to carry things that you have on your belt. You know, making sure that you know how to put on your, your personal protective equipment. So that if you are out on the scene, and you need to put that stuff on, you know where it is, how to wear it, what you're exposed to, and, and how to be safe. So out of that 96 hours, we have 21 hours, I believe, again, that are online. Uh, that still leaves us with, you know, 74, 75 hours. As it stands right now, every single hour of training is under the time. Uh, what has been done in the past, and part of the reason we are so far behind, to minimize costs, we say, "Well, if you three are on duty today, just rotate through the training." The problem that comes up with that is we only have three people working, and you need three people, they have to leave training. So they go, they get signed up and say they were there, but they didn't actually accomplish what they need to accomplish. And not only creates risk for them personally and professionally, but it creates risk for the city. To go back to the example of us wrecking all of those cars, if we don't have driver's training and we're wrecking cars, our insurance company is gonna look at us and go, "Well, you do what you were supposed to do." And then that's not covered. The courts have held that the inability to cover training when that's required, whether, because you say, "Hey, we just don't have refunds for that," that's not sufficient. And I know that's a hard thing to kind of come, come forward and say, but the courts don't care. The courts are never gonna say, "Well, we understand it's a hard economy. You know, you have to train with the fire. You have to train with your tools." So again, that's something that, that-
Those got bigger than us.
Uh, and then here's the other big issue that's coming forward, and this is training. So this is, this is what takes up, this is the law enforcement training on the new SATI Act. And this is what came out by management. This is a significant unfunded mandate from state in front of the public. There are 40 hours of training that are mandated under this, this new law. Uh, they have to be accomplished by 2028. And I know that when you say, "When we say that," that's eight years. That's easy. Problem is this, is that you have to be a state-certified, um, patrol tactics instructor in order to instruct these things. They just finished their curriculum. Uh, they're holding only six sessions throughout the state right now. These people trained up, so we're trying to start who can be the two people. Fortunately, that's funded. But the expectation is that as we go through this training, that it's a one to six instructor student ratio. So even in this county, we have 283 commissioned law enforcement officers. It will take us at least a year, once we get these staff members that can train people. It will take us at least a year just to get to the first block. And then we've gotta get another block. So if we are able to accomplish that, and let's say we're, we pray it gets done in three years or two years, if we push really hard, that now starts another clock, which means you have to accomplish the same thing you just did every three years. And they don't even have the entire career for a model. So there's, eight years sounds like a lot of time. It is, it is not. Every one of us, every corporation in this county is trying to figure out how we regionalize and make that happen. It's a big deal. Especially with what happened in Polleswell, it's a big deal, and we're gonna have to kind of lead the way in this. Um, again, our, uh, records management's kind of flushed this out a little bit. Uh, we are going to a new record management system, home and paperless. Working with Randy on, uh, the law enforcement stuff and the other records officer. Uh, we've changed a little bit of how we do things, made some laws, moved people to get records. But again, down to the training component, there are recertification expectations for all these positions that have not been done. So we've already handled that. We've got everyone to come back and recertify that. It's ongoing training. We can't just say, uh, "You train on this, do a job," and, you know, 10 years from now, it's fine. Uh, and again, coming back to authority, uh, our, our code needs to establish a police department. And in reading the code, it looks like it probably used to go with somewhere came out, and all it says right now is the police department shall have a chief and commander of sergeants and officers. And we need to have a code that says, "We have a police department. The chief will be selected based upon this, and then, and then a no of office." So I've got a, a sample that we've given the council that should be relatively easy, but I wanted to make you aware that that's an, that's an issue that could come up. So our 20.1 roadmap, uh, we are, again, working with finance. I'm hoping I can conclude it and judge it, but, uh, the training plans are a little shy. Uh, we're working on those leadership positions, our RMS replacement. Uh, and as we grow, most likely, we will need to have at least a, another type of civilian manager as opposed to a, a police manager over a refugee. I'll tell you right now, cops are terrible at managing civilians. We just are. We think different. And what, what the, the latest way to solve that problem is you bring a civilian manager. We did it, although it is amazingly successful. But that's something we can talk more about in the future. And then, uh, this last piece came up, uh, when we did our, our A brief in our after action work on Times and Lights. So Resolution, uh, 05709 came out in 2009. And the resolution, resolution of the city council said, "Hey, there's, there's a number of different functions that occur within the city, and we believe that these encourage tourism and encourage people to come in and, and, you know, enjoy it for a while." So we will designate these specific events as being supported by the city, by public works, by the police department. In the past, in speaking with our command staff and the other members of the department, a lot of what we have done in terms of our response has been to try very hard to minimize costs. And I'm not saying that's not important, but one of the issues that came up specifically at Times and Lights is in the past, you have the chief and the deputy chief who are free because of salary, working traffic control points, which means if, God forbid, somebody accidentally drives through the parade in a Cadillac, you have no command staff shadow. I asked for the plan for these big events, you know, the cruise, battles, Times and Lights. And I was given a piece of paper that said, "Here's where we go for bear days." So what we have done instead is, uh, in working with public works, we brought in fire, we brought in state patrol, and we ran an operations center in our, uh, in our department. We have a very long plan. Uh, if you guys would like to see our ICS plan, you're more than welcome to see it. But we coordinated the lock and lock. We did, we did have some hiccups. But we brought everybody that would possibly be involved into the same room. What you guys saw, you know, at Times and Lights, there was significant police records. We're not out there shaving people down or, you know, putting up gates like they do in Times Square. But again, our lessons learned from Polleswell is if you don't have people there right now and plan for that, it, it's gonna take some time. And Polleswell was my last night, and within 60 seconds, we had 25 people on the ground because we had those people already there. And there's a cost to that. And we as a, you know, for you as a, as city council, and we as, as staff at the city, we need to figure out what triggers what type of response. You know, you and, you and I, now, we talk about, "Do you come to America?" That's not that many people. That doesn't probably need that type of response. But when we have a large-scale event, at what point do we as the city say, "Okay, this is probably where we need to, you know, bring in state patrol, we need to bring in fire, we need to bring us in, we need to have public works involved." And that's something, again, it's, it's policy managers that will be asking you to consider moving on. Yes, sir.
So you've danced around, I think, the key issue that I'll just go ahead and throw out there. I'll be back at it. So the council, so we have these events, and there was this decision to have city events or city events. And in that case, public works and police refund those options through our hours. But we have these grandfathering events that really, from an audit standpoint, they can be considered given, because if we start to staff at the level that we need to staff, and we continue to staff them through free or the event organizer or something like that, they say, "Oh, no, we only need one block, so that's it." Well, if you need thirdly, there's a delta. And because we have this kind of, well, these are grandfathered projects. I think that's a, that's something we really need to address from a policy level standpoint, get some direction on, because it's very problematic. It's one of the outcomes that, I mean, the chief was like guiding into it, and then he kind of came to this, "Well, what do you mean, they're not paying for the services?" And so it's, it's an issue.
So another, you go ahead, well, good point, Mark. And another issue that's going, you know, is the ILETS, and that's, it's an extensive proposition, and we talked about that a little bit, and the rough idea of our cost to that.
Can you explain that?
I, ILETS, so a little I, capital L, and ETS.
Ah, I see.
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, do you talk about ILETS, ILETS, what that is, and what our initial price tag is gonna be on that?
There's a couple of things. One is, uh, it'd be nice to see what the past year's statistics were from a privacy angle versus historical perspective. It's been a while since we've seen that. It's nice. Second thing, I'll do that, like John said, your current, and then correct me if I'm wrong about, you know, recruitment.
Crime stats.
And if I, if I counted right, you're looking at, in '21, '22, increasing it from '21 to '23 officers. I might count maybe wrong. And there's a budgetary side to it, especially with the corporals, you know, increasing pay. Putting that aside, we're having trouble recruiting right now. And I know you want to pass out pamphlets and stuff. Is that realistic that we'll be able to cover all of the shifts that you want to do in '21, '22, and we're having trouble just staffing right now?
Uh, I would say that we are not having trouble staffing right now because we haven't tried to increase our staffing or, or fill that position. I, I think that sometimes, I think that we can be better recruiting. Right now, you know, historically, the recruiting we've done is post things in City Hall or, uh, put things on the CJATC website. What we need to do is be active and actively recruit. It is a hard market for cops anyway. But I think that if we don't do that, we're, we could get left behind. And I think that there are some things that we can do for recruiting. I know that Kitzep County and Bremer Center are now offering signing bonuses. But do we want to do that in a track lateral, or do we want to go for new hires? Uh, but I think also we need to change how we recruit, especially in a community like this. You want, you need to want to live here. So if you look at the, the other areas that you could sign, you can live in Tacoma, work for 15 or 20 different organizations. If you want to work, if you want to be here, you want to be here, and that's how we sell that as opposed to getting out of people too who need to be super, need to tackle that. I also think, and again, you're correct, I need to bring some statistics for you. I don't think this would be appropriate venue for that, but I'm not gonna just come and say, "Hey, I need more bodies," without telling you why and how that falls out. But again, there's, there's some information in your roadmap that talks about, even though we are small compared to all of the rest of the cities that are our size, we're actually, our type A crutches are about three times as much as everyone else's. Uh, we just had a stabbing down in the waterfront park in the middle of the day. Uh, we have a lot of issues that we need to work on. The problem is, is that if we've only got two people on, you know, we're, we're gonna have to decide what level of service we can provide. I'm not a big fan of doing more or less. I think that that doesn't serve our community. What I've already talked about is we have a culture in our department right now of, "If they call comes, we go immediately." And I've been really working on it, saying, "I'll be the one to take the heat." Somebody wants to call and say, "You didn't come right away when I called." I'll sit up and I'll, I'll tell them why. But I talked to the sergeant that ran the, the staff, and that was a fairly big deal. I mean, I got a puncture lung, and she went down there, detained the bad guy, cut this dude's shirt off, slapped the chest, you know, it was a big deal. And I was talking to her after to see how she was feeling, to make sure that she was okay. Her biggest stress wasn't the fact that she just dealt with that. Her biggest stress was that there was a noise complaint pending, and she wanted to make sure that we got there for her. And that comes to the staff room, because if that's what the community expects, we can't do it with two people when we have violent crimes occurring. It's just not, it's just not possible. And we can certainly talk more. I know this is not gonna be a, a staffing conversation. We can talk more. I will get you all the statistics that you need for us. And I can worry that that one's a bit like our screen. Yes, sir.
So the 2021 and 22 sergeant, does that include an increase in, in mental health, uh, resolution or responses? Have we talked about, we're gonna need probably greater responses to in the future?
Uh, you have a navigator program? Yeah. Uh, so currently, Navigator is not our employee. She is a, a, a full-time employee with the city of Polleswell. They manage that program. Um, and they had her down for 20 to 25 hours, um, for us. And that's why we came to you and said, "Hey, look, we're gonna lose her if we don't at least cover some of her, uh, some of her salary." There's a trend in the fire service right now to have some type of navigator as well. What they are recognizing is that a lot of their calls for service are not things that fire, you know, a higher level and highly trained firefighters should be doing. People call and say, "I'm, I'm disabled. I can't carry my brochures in." And they send a fire engine with five people. And that, that use of resources is just not responsible. And they're recognizing that, and they are looking for a way to match what law enforcement is doing, which is to have civilian employees that are highly skilled, that can go and do those types of things so that they don't have to respond to the large amount of resources that it takes to get one fireman to go help bring brochures in. So we'll have to talk more, and there's some logistical issues of sharing. Part of the reason why it will be successful with the navigator program is she, she is within the police department, which allows her to have access to our records. You get it with the fire service, you can't have our records, and then there's HIPAA, and we'll, we'll work through it.
And Chief's presentation has gone 25 minutes to 15. It's not, this is great stuff. And, you know, and Chief's doing fabulous work. Just if you could circle back to ILETS.
Sure.
Explain what that is to the council, what the kicker shot is.
Yeah, so I'll be brief. I'll talk fast. Uh, so ILETS is our, is our record management system regionally. So if you respond out to a call, and you take a crime report, it goes into a system called ILETS. ILETS is older than City Hall. Uh, if that gives you any idea of the functionality of that, I think. It is going to be, like, it's not, if it's still supported, I would be surprised if it's going to not be supported. It is that old. So we are in the process, it's been a year already, where, uh, regionally, we have been working towards a new, new, uh, solution towards this. Uh, we are in the middle of working with four or five different vendors. Our portion of it is about $200,000. And I know that's a high price. The issue is, there, we as a collective are going to be going with this. And if we choose not to do it, we are literally on- not to do it, we are literally on our own spot, and that means that we, I don't know how we are going to manage the records. We're going to be as responsible as we can, but our records management for a long portion of cases is, is old, it's time.
And the we, and that is countywide?
Yes.
This initiative is being led by SenCon and the county, right, principally, because they're the largest users. And so when, you know, they've got somebody pulled over, and they, you know, want to look up for records on this person and to see if they need to be detained for some other reason, this is that, it's that database that they're accessing, crime records and criminal records and that, those types of things. So it's a crucial tool for our police department. It's going away, and I just want you to be aware of it, that that's a living big ticket item that, you know, that our share is about $200,000.
Yeah, just looking on and on, I think this is exactly why we're here today, and it's the first time I've heard of this I-Leads, $200,000. It'd be great for all the department heads, where we're seeing like this coming out soon in the future, to be that, have a record of this, right? I mean, we just spent $200,000 on the downtown study. I'm not saying that was a bad, bad decision, but we need to know all of these things, and I know our highest record is as well, but we're planning to, because we can't do it all. And in fact, just have an idea, so we can help prioritize the budget spend and say, "This is far very important," and do something that's made research to kind of get a road map, a five-year plan of anticipated expenses, and help the council prioritize this issue. I feel like a lot of times, we need as a council, spend money with a couple of these of research, right?
Good point. And we've talked about this, I didn't plan it, I didn't have been planning for it, but I, I announced pretty confident, which holds true. I wasn't sure if you guys had heard of that, so.
I just want to give Donna Mias, the chief, as speaking. When we do the downtown master plan, or any of our subarea plans, and when we're planning for this 15,000 additional population in the next 20 years, our police department has to consider just part of that infrastructure. Because how many more staff and how many more resources do you need? And that all has to be part of the cost question.
Well, and maybe go back to your point earlier about just the overall staffing, because we only care for one department, their staffing needs. We've got more departments that we're going to care about their staffing needs, and I can hear from you, there's going to be additional bodies that are going to be needed or requested. That's why we're along your line. We need to look at this more from the 10,000, which is our job. And how are we going to be able to deal with all the needs of financing versus PD versus public?
Because personnel is what percentage of our overall budget? Oh, so save the energy.
It's huge. And there's also, we can't do it all.
Oh, no, it's not.
So we've got to figure out.
And that's why Sophie's here. The gap to all of us, so that we can have meetings in session at the end of the day to make the priorities list, and then we know there's going to be 20 priorities on it. And as we develop the budget and come back to you guys, that's what we need to know, what are the priorities? And we know that we're going to have a list of 20 or more priorities, and we're going to be lucky to get seven.
Well, and you know, I've got a rate of about 15 questions for me for this meeting to park down, please, I'll wait for it, and deal with it tomorrow.
Yeah.
And part of the issue is, is space needs, and we should first maintain hall, although that still works with the expansion of the parking.
And that's why this move of the evidence is crucial. Otherwise, you know, it was $6 million. We did the space analysis in my first year in office, and we looked at a law and justice center out of Tremont, $9 million price day. We, to add on to City Hall, we're looking at about $6 million and working about $3 or $4 million just to address our deferred maintenance. So that's why, it was such a good deal, you know, it was a lot of money, $250,000 to buy that building and put $250,000 in it, and we moved 10 employees a block down the street. It was way more cost-effective. And as we, as not, as the county develops their master plan campus up there, and it's years down the road, we need to be at the table, talking to them about a, Sophie's going to catch this, you know, co-locating our police department in an office that the county's going to build, and we're contributing money to it, or leasing it, or however, it's going to be way cheaper than adding on the City Hall, because the bigger, the other piece of adding on the City Hall is parking, and addressing our parking needs. And the county, as we've heard, we're making them add 800 parking stalls up the hill. Our deficit today, and not even adding on the City Hall, is 60 parking stalls by that report that we did. That's expensive. Structured parking is $50,000 a stall. And that's just, and that's not giving us additional beyond what we need today. So it's all expensive. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, I would encourage you, my office is always open. If you guys have questions, or you want to come down, by talking, we can talk about this stuff. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Does anybody need a break? Or if we take a quick break, it's going to pop a chair and see if there's anyone? Is it Tim or is it you? Okay. And Brandy can bring us back to order. She's up. So you can, he can stand there, or you can stand here?
I'll stand. I'll try not to agree with my excitement, records management and public disclosure So just a brief PowerPoint. On the second page of the PowerPoint, just identified our staff, so obviously myself, City Clerk. I have a deputy city clerk, which is Janine, and administrative assistant too, which is Michelle. And so our, our goal, as you probably already know, mission is to basically manage and keep the records of the city, and also to educate and continue to educate the public on the city's actions. So along with that comes with other responsibilities. And so there is on page three, the core responsibilities of the clerk's office, which I've shared before, but just an overview of what we do for the city. And I will start off with our 2019 successes. So as you can see, it is not a large list of items, as you may be seeing in other departments. We are more focused on day-to-day activities of the city. So there's a couple of things worth mentioning. One is, we, as the chief mentioned, we added the police department to our public records request portal system. So citywide, all public disclosure requests are going through the portal on our city's website, with an exception of the court, if statutorily required different procedures. So that was a good move and a big move. The other thing that I was able to manage in 2019 was a draft records management policy to include a scan and a toss. Again, as the chief mentioned, it's something vital for his department. It's probably going to be a theme throughout a couple of her department's presentations, is the need to manage our records. I'll go into a little bit details of that. Again, just sent the draft out. Hopefully, it will be finalized here within the first quarter. And as I work with the departments to streamline and finalize that process, of course, it'll go to the council for further input as well. So again, like I said, there isn't a high list of accomplishments for 2019. It's just our day-to-day operations. And so the next slide will kind of show you or give you a taste of what we do, and so, as well as our work plan for 2020. So our work plan for 2020 is basically to continue to track contracts and insurance for the city. I also, our department manages claims management. So one of my goals for, and has been for a number of years, is to memorialize a claim management policy. So we act on it, we have interactions with different departments, we have protocol laws of, if we send it to our insurance, or do we pay it internally, how do we reduce those risks, those type of things. It's nice to have a policy, again, once we get it drafted, shared with the department directors, it'll come before the council for your final review. Along with that is, I've briefly mentioned claims management. So it is litigation preparation. So fortunately, as we become a bigger city, we increase our risk. And so not only from wrecking police vehicles, but it's also HR personnel risk. So as, as employees leave, or maybe on good terms, not so good terms, again, increases the risk. Tortling processes, again, as we become bigger within the city, becomes more risk to the city, and citizens believe that the city's liable for their expenses, whether it is not maintaining sidewalks so they couldn't fall, is that negligence on the city's part, maybe not, maybe so. So we have to try and manage those type of risks. And then again, damages against city property. Police again mentioned damaged vehicles, or could be equipment that is not being housed in a facility, is out in the rain, and maybe a tree falls onto that new pretty equipment that we have now, is going to be covered with our insurance, we have to pay for it. Was there some things that we could have done to prevent the windstorm and knock a tree over to our new tractor? Who knows? But those are some of the things that I work on throughout the city. So basic general work is, as you know, as council adopts action ordinances, we codify those with our third-party vendor, which is Pro Publishing. Those go on the website, or are required statutorily to have a municipal code, and manage that code. And we have it on our website, and a third party that does all of that. So we upload all the ordinances to them, they manage it. It is kind of outdated as to what the public sees. They just see the final product. And my goal for 2020 is to work with them to have a more visible, up-to-date view of the code. Some of them have redline versions, some of them have older versions. They can update and look at the exhibits that are attached to those. Maybe we adopt a cop plan, right? The cop plan is a codified. Then it's easier to have, attach that cop plan with that ordinance all in one versus having it here and there, and remember which resolution it is, or if it's an ordinance, whatever. So my goal is to work with the departments to make sure that it is what they want in-house, and as well as the public can easily access our municipal code. Couple of things that we need to update is our social media policy. We put all of our videos out on YouTube. There really isn't a policy for that in our social media. We need to incorporate those into that policy. We also need to update our public records request policy. Each year, state legislator passes exempt documents that are outside of the Public Records Act that needs to be made available to the public at any given time. So those need to be updated, and then, as well as our records management policy finalized. Like I said, we've, it's already slated to become, come to you guys before the end of the first quarter. And so that is the work plan. I just wanted to give you a couple insight as to records management, or excuse me, public disclosure requests. So you'll see a slide that says the total hours spent on public disclosure from 2017 to 2019. We have it down by department, and we'll go into the details, kind of review those. And as you can see, the police department and the city clerk's office has the most public disclosure requests over the number of years. And so those are the hours spent. And then if you go to the next page, it kind of tells you the number of public disclosure requests. So you'll have both of those slides, again, the city clerk, police department, and then coming in third is DCD. And you can kind of see the reason why there's a smaller, from 2017, 2018, and 2019. So 2017 is really when we started implementing the GOQA, which is the public, or public disclosure request. We implemented that. And then our goal for 2017, and going to 2018, is really encouraging each department, if somebody's putting a request for public records, it is a public records request, and we need to track that, monitor it. As you know, the state legislator requires, if we have a certain dollar threshold spent on public disclosure request processing, we have to file an annual report. We're not at that threshold yet, but it's always nice to keep a track, so that way when we are required, we'll be ready, have the tools in place to support, to report those numbers. And so, and as you can see, 2018 kind of tapered off a little bit. I mean, it increased, but because of, we were actually tracking. And then 2019, again, we still have some more requests, but that's probably why there's such a big jump from 69 to 119, if you're looking at the number of requests for the clerk's office. Talking this a little better. Okay. And then moving on to records management. Two slides again. I believe the first one in your packet should be the number of electronic records that can be made each year. Paper records, for the most part, is declining, because most of the records are born digital. There is a backlog of some departments that need to get those scanned and itemized and put into a system to where we can track. And so we are working with the finance department in trying to get a software program to help us with that. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Laserfish, but we are grateful for that. City Hall vote has implemented that last year. And there'll be more information to come under the finance fuse there. But as you can see, we are accumulating quite a bit of electronic records, and we need to get a handle of those, on those. And so we're hoping to have some sort of software program to help us manage those versus bringing in a part-time person managing all the records. Because as you can see, when you look at the total of records that we have for the city, we don't have it on the slide. I just have the percentages, and if you look at the number of, oh, there we go.
You wanted to take my ear.
Okay. So I don't have it broken down in totals in here for you guys, but I can tell you right now that when I looked at our email archiver, we have 4.5 million emails that are stored in our email archiver, and probably about 90% of those can be disposed, because there's either no retention schedule, or there's no retention value to it, or it has already not a retention schedule. So having this new software that we're hoping the council will support is, will help us manage those, and put retention schedule dates on those, when they come up with retention, do a quick review, get them in the strong.
If you look at the number of requests, and then the man-hours, I mean, Nick had in 2018, 60 requests, but because most likely those weren't digitalized records, we spent 227 man-hours probably putting those into electronic format, so that we could issue that. So that's, one of the drivers of this, the need for electronic records management system is, some of these records are on paper or not in a proper archiving system, and so we spent a tremendous number of man-hours, either putting them in the digital format or managing, finding the records and complying with the request.
So the theory is, is you have your records managed and continually disposing, archiving, whatever the rule, you know, whatever your requirements are, then you're spending less time gathering them for public disclosure requests. So that's, that's the goal. And then lastly, I will leave you with my, can you all switch around here, is my goals for 2020 and 21 and 22. So continue to look for ways to inform the citizens of city actions. Again, the mayor touched on that, that we need some sort of continuity and continued efforts to educate the public on what we're doing, either on a day-to-day basis or in future actions. And then this is where I spoke about Laserfish, so it's create technology efficiencies in records management, agenda management, and contract management. So that's.
I think it's closing, Brandy's also advocated for some sort of a resource for public information, pushing that out, so that we're not such a reactionary mode, and then tools to manage our electronic. I think that.
Are we getting any assistance from the state?
The records management.
No, it's more required than I thought it is. Okay. Other question, Brandy?
Just, just to comment on one of the things that, that we're working on, private records request is, you can try to publicize on our website, those requests, we ask for documents, so that people. Those are briefly asked by documents, so people make the request. We just find it with the website, people like to spend a lot of staff time producing that or whatever.
That's one of the things.
And Laserfish.
Laserfish, we do that more. We just don't have a system to do that, creating this first problem.
Well, it's a website management, it's a process.
Yep, absolutely. We'd love for the public to be able to get through those records themselves, which is exciting. Not that we don't want to.
Can you give an example of a most recently signed disclosure request that I've come across in court? That I've multiple requests for?
So most, so two of the biggest requests that we're working on right now that will, when we're done, will have taken, we work from 18 to 22 months to complete the request, is emails. So basically, they want anything that has to do with the basic profession pathway. And fortunately for them, our email archiver goes all the way back to 2008. And so we're able to pull all those emails out and get to them. And most of them, like I said, has already been, we don't have a retention schedule for those. But it is pulling and going through and reading 60,000 emails because of the search terms that we use. And then the other one is anything that has to do with a certain portion of the city. And again, this is where litigation comes in. Our litigation, you know, somehow this thing is negligent in one way or the other. And so they want anything that has to do with any maintenance, paving, anything that has to do with just a small portion of the street. And so again, you have to extract those emails. And when you put it in our archiver with 4 point whatever million emails and you put the word maintenance in, you'd be surprised how many newsletters and trainings and uses the word maintenance. And so that's the bulk of our request for most time spent. The most frequent doesn't really take a whole lot of time.
Do you take them all 60,000 emails? And not then figure out what they need?
I can't because there might be three client privilege. There may be maintenance issues that an employee may have described that could have their social security number in it, I doubt it. But, yeah. Or they use their personal, they use the city computer for their personal use and they're updating their retirement, whatever. And in there might be the word maintenance, may not be maintenance. But there's a key term there that's pulled that up and you have to go through and verify that's what that is. As much as we educate staff not to use their city computer for personal information, it still happens, it does, and so that's why we need to do that. The most frequent that doesn't take a whole lot of time is permits. They want a copy of whatever's in their permit. Most of, it's already scanned, there's a handful that are not. Stormwater permits type things, so those are in and out. And then police department are incident reports. If they were in an accident or insurance companies asking for it, whatever. So those are the most common ones.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna, I think we're getting this time back. Judge Juries joined us. And here, talk us a little about what going, he and Sharon, that going on in the court. You're probably gonna get interrupted by the waiter coming in and taking some orders. I apologize ahead of time for that.
All right, well, I was gonna say, I have two, you know, things I wanna say at the beginning.
And I want to thank you for your time. You are the best referee in the world.
Well, one of my points is, one point was that there's, this winter, there's no chips on the table. And secondly, I didn't know that we could make custom shirts. I didn't know that that was an option. So I would have said, I have written the one that said, "Don't make me use my judge voice." So Sharon's just handing out a couple of, we just have a couple of little, hesitation, documents or things we want to show you about what's, how things are going. Overall, things are going very well. We've had some issues with our court security. When the new chief police came in, he kind of took a look at what we were doing for court security. Thought it was a little bit inadequate, inadequate, and made some suggestions. And one of those kind of determined that our court security person was, did not have the commission to have the tools that she had in court, including a gun and handcuffs. Because she had not been properly trained and that's caused some liability questions for the chief. So she has, now does not have a gun and does not have handcuffs. And we've kind of told her, if somebody runs and to go, run out the door, just let them go, but we will deal with them on a future date. And not to tackle anybody or engage in a fight with anybody or do anything like that. So I think it's, it's kind of worked its way to where it's a manageable situation. The prior court security people who were carrying guns and had handcuffs and all those things, we probably clean that without proper authorization, which we discovered when the chief would look at it. But also, as far as court security, we have a new walkthrough metal detector, which I think is a big improvement. And it wheels out into the middle, I don't know if any of you have seen it, it wheels out into the middle of the room there. She can have people go through this walkthrough metal detector and then she's not patting people down and searching them like she was before. So that's a great improvement. She's still having to search into people's bags, which is not ideal, but she is still doing that. And I think, I think it's going well. So that's court security, and that's something that we've been working on. And I know Sharon's been working really heavily on, working with the chief on that, about getting court security to be up to where we can live, right? Anything further on that?
You did a good job.
Okay. And then I think our staff, well, is doing really well. I think we're doing, we're doing pretty even with our staff and everything's been going well there. Now what you have in front of you is just some numbers. And those numbers are numbers of filings for different categories. And we took a look at what we did last year, 2018, and then, well, I guess that's 2018, and then last year, 2019. You can see that the numbers are a little bit down between the infractions. We had 697 in 2018, 546 in 2019. We had, you see the DUI numbers and the criminal citation numbers, a little bit down, but not a lot. And then you can see the parking is way up. And you may have, as you mentioned, you may have realized or had people talking to you because what happened is they hired a new parking enforcement officer and she is enforcing the parking rules.
She's good.
And she's out there enforcing parking rules that we're, I don't think we're ever enforced before. So that's what I tell people when they come in complaining about their parking tickets. I say, there's, you know, basically, there's a new sheriff in town and she's, she's going at you. So if you have any problems or issues with that, talk to the police department because they're the one that, director of what she's doing. But parking has been, has been way up. And then that kind of looks and turns to the monetary part of this. It is on the next page, and that's, if you can see, the parking amounts. Yeah, it's almost, it almost doubled. 70,000 in 2018, 127,000 in 2019. So I think, I think things are kind of eating and out a little bit there. We'll see what happens down the line. But I think, you know, just my personal opinion is, I mean, I get a lot of people who come to me and they have, they have issues with their parking tickets and they come to the city to spend money and, and they've gone to lunch and they've done things and they spend more than two hours. And they come back and they get a $20 parking ticket. I can tell you that I normally look to see if they've ever had a parking ticket in the city of Ford Orchard. And if they have not, then that is dismissed as a warning, basically. And because I think, I think that's appropriate. And people who have a good story or a good reason why they worked longer than two hours, I usually, if they've never had another parking ticket, then that is a warning to them. And then you can see the amount in regards to non-parking, so pretty much everything else. 137,000 in, of revenue in 2018, 100,000 this year. I want to talk a little bit about that. I think that's probably going to be a trend in the future. The appeals court, the Washington State Supreme Court, as well as the Court of Appeals and the legislature made it clear to judges in district and municipal court that the court is not supposed to really necessarily be a money-generating entity. That people who are indigent should not be required to pay on legal financial obligations that they cannot afford to pay. So we've been given that direction. And I can tell you, it's much different in, even in district court than it is in municipal court. I'm probably imposed a little bit more than what they actually impose in district court. There's often when somebody gets a conviction in district court when there's no fine at all.
So district court is up in the county?
Up in the county, right. And they do the same misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor offenses that we do in, in the municipal court. And I can, and they have taken a stance at the direction, as I indicated, of the legislature and of the appeals court that people who are indigent, and most everybody who comes through our court is indigent, almost all, have a, get a public defender and get, and are on food stamps or whatever. Or some, for some reason, are deemed to be indigent. And I can tell you, that's probably 90, we'll give them 90 some percent probably. And so, in district court, they're not getting any non-mandatory. And there are some mandatory fines, but they're often are not. But we are able to impose at least some, and I feel it's, you know, the old days, people used to get fines of $850 or $600. I mean, that wasn't standard. The two standards were $850 or $600. Now, the prosecutors are still requesting that amount of money. But I can tell you that I'm usually giving 150, 250, 350, something around there. Something that's manageable through community service. Because I have, I, what's something that district court does not have, a community service program. And we are trying to utilize that community service program. So somebody who gets a $150 fine is basically one day of community service. For, what is it, 14, 15 an hour, 13, 15 an hour? So they get 13, 15 an hour off of their, off their, so it's community service. And if they want to pay $150, then they pay. If they don't, they can do a day, a day and a half, two days of community service and have that off their record. And we have, so that's where this other sheet comes into play is that this is what we've done in community service. And that is direct benefit to the city. And we sometimes come in and say they want to do community service outside of the city, in Pierce County or Southern County, and they have to show me a very good reason why they're not doing it for the city of Ford Orchard because I believe.
I'm missing it, Your Honor, is it on the state?
Yes, yes it is, that is. And Sharon can talk a little bit about that. Since she's run, now Sharon's now kind of running the community service program for the city after we had been going through the agency down the street here.
KCR.
KCR, and then we took a guy in-house who was doing it. And now, basically, we are the schedulers now.
And a lot of this top portion is really hard to read. I'm not sure how our previous community service person kept his information. Bottom line, the top degree was from January to August. So really, we're looking at the bottom numbers of that. The value of wages that were performed, the total value of the program is from January to August. And then the tight portion at the bottom is from September through the end of the year. So overall, we had 14,000, what we saved, the city, 14,000, $640. Basically, the service workers go out there and do some work.
And that's $12 an hour. And if our public workers folks did this work, you can multiply that by three or four.
Yeah, I didn't have their salaries like in that, but it's very beneficial. I think up until a point, they were having to go off-site to another location. And it looks like overall, from January to August, they did 827 hours work. But through September, through December, when we started checking in with us and coming to the city and doing it from the city, we've done almost 140 hours. So I think it's very beneficial that we're not losing people now sending them away.
Because in court, I mean, we did this, they just go right outside and talk to the clerks out there and get set up on the community service program. So we suggest that to virtually everybody who comes through. And whether they're gonna take that opportunity or not is certainly up to them. But that is an option that we have that district court does not have, which I think is a good option because 1,220 hours to the city, going out cleaning up parks and doing different kinds of things around the city, I think is beneficial to us and to the defendants as well. So that's what's going on there. And that's, and I think there's a little bit of a different philosophy, a traditional philosophy between myself and my predecessor in regards to how we operate. I think my predecessor liked to throw people in jail. And she liked to throw them in jail for as long as she possibly thought that she could and get away with it. And we, we're more into trying to help people to get to where they're not coming to more, into treatment programs and community service and things like that. So I think, I think it's reflected in the jail bill.
I was gonna ask that question. Do you have a sense now of what the jail bill in 2019 was versus 2016?
I have today, but I don't give a full financial report here.
And overall, I think, where I came, I think the jail bill averaging anywhere between 40 and 55,000 dollars a month. I think we're down in the 25, 30,000 dollar range.
It's significant.
So about half, but, but we're also, you know, so I'm doing a lot more of having people come in and let's see where you're at and get your treatment and get your treatment going and things like that.
Yeah, I think for 2019, our biggest accomplishments were, I think, Josh Rui and I, or both of them, said that it's more about rehabilitation of these people. We updated our website, we put a lot of information out there. I know that we've tried to be more thorough, that the more resources people have out there, the more they have to come to court is better. The biggest thing we did last year was we scanned all of our closed archive files into, it's just words, we haven't had a program yet, but they're all scanned. So if they call us, we email them instead of them coming to court. Create it out, charge them, they can afford it, pay their fines, and we're gonna charge them for copies. So those are the biggest things of the year.
Yes.
Well, if you could just help me remember, you're, you're looking at an automated system.
Right, so that is what I was gonna talk about next, is what we got, the issues for the future.
Not on the table, is that me, can you please say something?
No, I'll wait. I just want to ask my question.
So this is the issues for the future, is this is a court management system. So we came before you before saying we were gonna look into a court management system. We've looked into that. It's fairly expensive and possibly unnecessary. So here's what's going on in the world of court management, is there are two factions. One set of factions is going on their own. And they are making deals or, you know, making agreements with manufacturers of these kind of systems to go out on their own. So that's what Kentucky District Courts do. And they have a $750,000 agreement with Tyler, sort of Tyler Technologies, that they are going to get their own court management system. And that's happening, and happening, Tyler has did King Counties, and Spokane County is also doing that. So the bigger major counties were fed up with the state. Because the state was supposed to do a statewide court management system, which they worked for three years on and then, at the last minute, basically canned the whole thing. So that's when these other courts said, "Well, we can't wait around to the state because they're taking forever and they can't get their shipping order. So we're going out on our own." And so that's what they did, is they went out on their own and they're doing that. And that's expensive, probably more expensive than we want to really get to now. So what's happened after all these courts went out on their own is the state said, "Well, wait a minute, we're gonna be left behind here. We're not gonna be, we're gonna be left behind and we're gonna have no ownership or no ability to determine what happens in the court management arena." So they went back and now they are in negotiations with, well, it's Journal is the one that they're doing up in the district court, and Tyler's the one that they're doing. doing it in district court and Tyler is the one that they're doing through the state. So the state has gotten back into the arena of getting a statewide court management system. So what we're doing here at Port Orchard is we've kind of got our foot in both camps. It's like, okay, somebody's going to come out on top here and it's going to be either the state's going to have a court management system which will be significantly less of an outlay for the city of Port Orchard or they're not. And we have been speaking and talking to the Journal people who are doing Kitsap County. And Kitsap County is going to have to go through the whole thing first. They're going to have to go through and have a whole, all the implementation and do all the forms and get everything done and they probably are maybe a year or two away. At the least they've come up and they've started and they've started but it's going to be a long process. At the end of that process, if the state still doesn't have it, they're, you know, ducks in a row and they still haven't come up with a statewide court management system, then we may look to piggyback onto the county's Kitsap County system. And we'll have to see what, because Journal didn't want to even talk to us or get or even get put out a money figure or anything like that because they had no idea. They were going to do the big fish first and then they'll come around and talk to the smaller agencies. So after Kitsap County, if there's still a need, then we're going to have to go to Journal. But we're waiting to see how things shake out and that's, that's what we have to do.
Tim, a number of years ago, Ross and I actually booked into the home detention mechanism for jail, for the crisis, I guess, in the last year or so. Is that something that is available and service savings?
It is available through the county. So when we have somebody and they, the agreement of the parties is they leak, they're guilty and they're going to do thirty days of electronic home monitoring. We do that and we, they get set up to the county and they are put on the county system. And the county does that through us and we pay, but they, but the defendants pay the county, ten dollars a day. So the defendants themselves pay the county for that electronic home monitoring system. But what we're saving is thirty days that somebody sit in, you know, probably wouldn't have been thirty days if it was electronic home, but it would have been ten days at eighty, ninety something dollars a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would have saved us a thousand dollars or something by them going up and doing electronic home monitoring through the county. That is available, yeah.
Are we getting many that make that offer versus going to jail?
No, because we're not getting any sentences. They have it, it's due ten days or more. More of our sentences are under ten days now.
So higher debt for everybody in jail for thirty days, ten years of community service, so.
Right, I appreciate this is a good step forward but, you know, given the option of, yeah, you can spend thirty days but it's very costly. Or you can, you can go across the city.
Is the defense can't pay if they're called.
That's true. But something would be cheaper for us to pay that for than the other, the jail.
Yeah, and it is true that it would be, but that's, we're probably not, you know, we're going to pay for their electronic home monitoring probably.
Is that ten day, like, escape code or WAC or?
What's that?
The ten day limit, is that set by WAC or?
Uh, that's set by the, by the jail. Yeah, by the jail.
So much to set them up and hook them up in time, it's going to be under ten days.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. But we do that, sometimes we do out of county electronic home monitoring on a limited basis if they have a good reason why they need to do it in Pierce County or Mason County if they have, there's, there's a home monitoring companies that will use that.
If they have a significant amount of time, we also send them out to courts, jail, courts will come and get them and it's half the cost.
Of our, right. So that's kind of the future, anything else for the future Sharon that we have going on?
Basically the case management system and, you know, we talk a lot about revenue and I just heard Mark, we did change a bunch of companies this last year to try and just get some of our cases getting there. But I did this here for a minute, yesterday, we happened to have a chance to talk about it. There's a new, it's a new senate equity right now, they're trying to vote on it next Friday. Right now, when someone goes out and gets a speeding ticket and they don't pay it, we automatically suspend their license. We report to part licensing and in thirty days it suspends their license. They're wanting to change that to where someone has five tickets for their license. If that goes through, we're going to see our revenue go way down because who's going to pay a ticket? There's no ratification, their credit, watching companies, they're going to report to an outside credit agency now because it's not a voluntary bill. And so if that happens, I don't know who's going to pay it. I would, because what's, what's it going to do either? So.
So then that would affect you renewing your license either?
No, not so often.
And once you get a sixth, are all six tickets renewed?
Well, this is-
Well, right now it's one. One ticket will be that, but they're saying, yes, on the sixth ticket, then it will suspend your license.
But just for the six tickets or for the five previous and a six?
The five previous.
Well, we'll see what happens. So this is a bill and there's all kinds of crazy stuff gets thrown through the legislature that never ends up being a law, but we'll see what happens and maybe that will shoot the ball. Oh, here we go. Thank you. Excellent. Dave, Dave you have a question?
I have a few quick questions, one real quickly, you would have community service to the postive, that's one question. And second of all, are you seeing a lot of people come from private parks, come back through or are some of the programs working against people?
Well, I'll let Sharon talk about the community service.
Typically it's pretty helpful. A park might get a lot of, a lot of, yeah, there would be, I can help this facility that is county too, so they're, they're back there.
Oh, as far as that, as far as the repeat of energy, I mean, there's a couple of guys that I've been dealing with that you probably see walking around and hanging out at the park and things like that that I've been dealing with for now for a couple of years. Couple of have graduated and have been successful and have gotten treatment and they come in and you say, man, you look a ton better than you have over the last year. So we have some successes, some people are just continuing to have issues and we're going to continue to have issues. I think one of the best things going right now is that the counties did that one eighth to one percent or whatever for mental health treatment. And so some of these people, did I say we have prosecutors, prosecutor for hit the county and take some of our people, put them in behavioral health court, which is a treatment court up in the county. And so, and that's, I think, is getting people off of our roles and onto mental health roles where they belong. So if we didn't have that one eighth to one percent for mental health, I think we'd be hurt a lot more than we are. So we're seeing some progress. Yeah, so there is, yeah, there is progress. And the behavioral health court is definitely ramping up and it's getting bigger. They are going to put even more resources into that program and so we can hope that, because like Sharon said, often the guys that we're dealing with, they get caught up in district court and superior court as well and then they, you know, so we're all dealing, you know, because we're all dealing with the same folks often. So that's, you know, that's kind of where we, any other questions?
What does P S D A stand for?
That, Sharon?
Safety.
So, yeah, when we do, when we do, let's say we do a hundred and thirty-eight dollar ticket that's been written by the police agency and we get a hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the federal, how much goes to the state?
Well, it's broken down, every ticket basically, if a ticket's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, you have to add a hundred and five percent to that for P S D A, so.
Yeah, so they, yeah, so they, a lot of the money that is taken in through the municipal court for fines, a lot of that goes to the state. There's different pools that go to different things. And like there's five dollars goes to some-
Brain.
Yeah, brain trauma. Yeah, brain trauma injury. So there's all these funds in the state account. They take a little bit to bite out of every fracture.
So a hundred and thirty-eight dollars to get hit?
We probably get, yeah, we probably get forty.
That much?
Yeah, probably right around that, probably forty. Hey, anything else? But I think everything that's going on is going pretty well, we're pretty happy up there, aren't we? Yeah, I can tell you the best thing I ever did was hire Sharon as the administrator.
She's always been that great.
Yeah, she's a-
Tim, there's a fabulous buffet, do you'd like to stay in general?
I am on my way to Leavenworth, Washington.
All right.
For the three day weekend.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. We're getting, we ordered food, some ordered off the menu. I think we're going to do the next presentation and then as the food starts to arrive, then the rest of us will go out and get our buffet so that we're not eating what the others aren't, so. You can, so we can get water, I'll get more water. And so rock, paper, scissors, public works, or planning, Nick's still, Mark's going last. Nick doesn't care, I'm going to, oh, finance, finance, you want to go next?
Yeah, because I think there's a good logical flow.
Okay, no one's going to tell us how poor we are and then public works and planning are going to be a grapple.
And just a note, I'm going to follow up with you all and get digital versions of these materials so that you'll all have them under your box.
I know. Yes.
I love the color.
I'm using this kind of brand, we're there.
What?
Hold it up. It's a color green. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, do you want Rob to have one?
Yes.
And you want me to lift it up?
Yeah, it's like.
Okay, that'll work.
All right, so for the interest of time, and I kind of yield my time for a later conversation, we've got three pages I want to talk about. So I'm going to kind of keep it short, five minutes, but I want to focus on the finance department. Oh, let me start my timer here.
How did that?
Okay, five minutes. So we're talking about the finance department, IT department. So again, as many of you know, the city of Port Orchard's finance department is accountable for the backdoor management of the city's resources. Our department is involved in pretty much everything, front end, customer experience, customer service, utility billing, our accounts payables, receivables, inventory management, payroll, business licensing, budget, grants, special projects, cash management, financial reporting, debt management, human resources and IT. Big department doing a lot of things. What you see there is a graph of how we've worked over the last year to restructure our department to match our internal controls and the guidance of the state honors office and make sure everyone's in the right roles and responsibilities. So we really have a tier three of the level two accounting assistants. We have the bottom tier two of the level accounting assistants. Now one of these positions has been vacant since April. As you guys recall, we rolled out the new software, I want to see where we can gain efficiencies, how we could restructure things around and this is kind of where we've landed now. So it was helpful to take that time to let the software do what we had thought it would do and did help us in a lot of ways, helped us streamline a lot of work and processes and efficiencies. And so now we've identified, we're going to fill this vacant position with a payroll support person, an accounts payable person and upfront counter support person. Again, the level twos are going to have access into our cash and receiving. And you'll see we've now installed a level three where they are serving the role of reviewer. Really building internal control into our organizational structure, excuse me, there. And this will allow the assistant finance director to serve her role, but she really hasn't had an opportunity to because of how the workflow, workflow. So she'll actually become the internal city auditor. She'll drill down these positions, review what they're doing, how they're doing it, doing appropriately, return, again, follow the SAO's guidance of the limited audit, any opportunities for fraud. So real quickly, I just wanted to introduce my staff to you. Snell, you might have seen him many times, upfront, the counter, we've interviewed her to the UV side more, taking on more responsibility roles and talking with customers, taking on phone calls, assisting in backing up utility billing. Kathy is our lead utility billing assistant. And before, with the prior software, we had to have two full-time utility builders. With the new software down to one backup support, we're trying to conduce to cross trains, we have two fully ready-to-go utility builders. Patty is our accounts payable specialist as well as accounts receivables. And again, you've seen the process changes we made in accounts payable, we've gone to weekly processing, which kept our payments timely. And I don't know if you noticed in the last council meeting, we had numerous packets, I think it was six total, that had we not instituted that policy, delegates and authorities to pay bills that they come in and then bring the whole thing back to council appropriately in the next very day, we would have had to held up six weeks' worth of payments. So again, I think it's great policy, we're executing what we want to do and we're putting in the internal controls to make sure that everything's appropriate. Again, we have a county assistant vacant position and it could be you. However, we've interviewed this week and I'm hopeful that we will actually hire someone next week. So I missed your chance, I'm sorry. Moving on, I'm going to take a look at the level three assistants. Gretchen, she's now going to be serving our role as internal controls for utility billing. So anytime our utility clerk produces a billing statement, she is reviewing what's being billed, does it make sense, are the consumption levels where we expect, are the dollars being billed appropriately? Again, billing is internal controls. She is also responsible for our E R and R fleet management and inventory management as well as a number of other separate departments. Heidi, who is our accounting assistant three, she is going to serve as the internal control of our accounts payable, accounts receivables. So before any accounts payable is made, Heidi has to review that packet and approve it. And they, she's the responsible for like scrubbing every invoice to verify that it's being properly coded, it's a proper expense and we have all the proper documentation signatures to go along with that. She's also responsible for preparing the writing of the budget and grant processing, which has been a huge role over the last two years with the Tremont project and so hopefully going forward that workload will, will get a little bit lighter. Cory is our accounting three assistant who will serve as our payroll reviewer. She's also going to be the reviewer of our cash, so I'm taking our assistant finance director out of the role of cash and again I want her to be the internal auditor. So Cory will now serve the role of reviewing all the cash transactions to make sure that the tail is adequate, what it's supposed to be. Debbie, I'm going to introduce herself, if she likes it, but she's doing a fabulous job, we just hired her. She's got lots to talk about, so I mean, that time's coming up. Steve, our IT guy, again, you guys allowed us to do this, make this position go full time and Steve asked if he could build that work and that's been a tremendous asset to the city to maintain, A, an employee who's a good employee, he's along with everybody, good to work with, very smart, business process minded and actually he is setting goals for the city to move forward. I'll talk a little bit about more about some of the successes that Steve has able to bring to the city further on. Now Rebecca is assistant finance director currently. She is involved in everything in finance operations, cash investment management, annual reporting, counting, every facet of our department. And I'm hoping to, as we can, continue to grow on this department's pusher towards being our lead management coordinator officer. So lead management is a new philosophy, I guess, over the last couple of years, ten years I suppose, is really focused on process improvement and continuous improvement. But taking a look at your procedures, your processes and where are you doing things that don't add value to the organization and the system and where can you eliminate those and add value. So I'm hoping to convince her to take additional training and become that role for the city. I know the county has a few folks, I know other cities have moved this way to have a designated person to do that and they're finding projects that are having success to streamline their whole operations. Yeah, myself, I see me quite frequently, finance director. Selfie shot, nobody want to take that, they're a little scared, I don't know why, but-
Talking to everybody else, got these bad, glamour shots and you have just a selfie.
That's a good question, we should have glamour shots in our department.
Should I put them on next year?
I think I put them on the budget. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty work plan, we delivered on our county's software implementation. We delivered on the E R and R, ongoing, we keep the lights on, all the operational stuff. We're going to continue to focus on long-term capital funding with the council, our long-term strategic goals, then continue to evaluate scenarios and improve our processes. So upcoming for 2020, you heard about this, our workforce strategic planning assessment and salary survey update work, we're pushing that forward, pushing our queue back to get some firms to respond. We're going to, this is the kickoff of our twenty-one, twenty-two writing of the budget, induction, operational issues, capital issues and we'll continue to talk over the next couple of months and therefore- We're going to tell you folks on long, long-term capital funding with the council, our long-term strategic goals. Then continue to evaluate scenarios and improve our processes. So upcoming for 2020, you've heard about this, our workforce strategic planning assessment and salary survey update work, we're pushing that forward, pushing our Qs out to get some firms to respond. We're going to, this is the kickoff of our 21, 22 budget, induction, operational issues, capital issues, and we'll continue to talk over the next couple of months and therefore. Accounts payable, you've heard it several times, we are going to push to go paperless. And the tool that will get us there is, and you'll hear more about that in just a few seconds. Another program that I'd like to push forward is, we talked about this, an internship and apprenticeship program. Planning department came to council recently to pay, have a, someone would like to have an internship, can we work this in? And when we discussed this, we said, this makes sense city-wise, to actually have a built-in program that would allow every department to bring on an intern when budget's available and when there's projects and when there's an opportunity to promote the brand of the city of Port Orchard. So that's a program I'd like to kind of work with the council in the next few months, to see if we can push that forward. And then lastly, we're going to work on updating all our financial policies, instant tune our IT policy, updating personnel policies. There's a number of policies we have to update. Now with that, I mean, maybe seven minutes, two minutes over, and I'm going to yield the next portion to Debbie.
No, I don't know if this is going to be our, I was, but if I was correct or if I'm wrong, but that's a pre deal. I think it's a transition from a cruel basis to a cash basis, yeah.
Yes, yeah, but I think we pulled that off in 18. So I focused on 19, yeah, we've got lots of successes, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I certainly would love to continue to champion that, but again, there's a success in 18, and we're moving to the software in 19, continuing to improve our processes, it's a focus.
Thanks, well, thank you for inviting me to be here today. I came on board in the end of April, Ben Howard retired for a couple of weeks, that's led me to two of us. Prior to my arrival, the city had successfully negotiated all five of their union contracts. Since my arrival, we've gone to an online application system, try to streamline and improve processes there. Our civil service commission is back up and running, it's now meeting regularly, and they just approved the update on some service rules. We added a body medical plan of your accruals for non-union employees, and it has been a year of recruitment, 21 different recruitment processes for, for our non-union employees.
So, since you've arrived, or for the whole year?
That is the whole year.
The whole year, yes, but still, 21 years.
So the next page, I want to give you a little recap of your current employee workforce. And these are the folks that are out there doing all of your directives. We have currently have 83 employees, including an intern, as Noah just mentioned, and we have four vacant positions, one in public works, one in court, who they don't believe they actually need to fill, one in finance, which we're real close on, and one for the, it should be the sergeant you accrued, and then the trickle-down strategy. Just under half of our employees are non-union, or, excuse me, are non, yeah, non-union. The other half roughly are represented by either teens or police skilled. Your police department employs just over a third of your employees, couple of works, just under a third. And the rest of us are scattered throughout the remaining departments. Historical FTE count, now I'm going off of specific numbers, because that's what I have readily accessible to me. When you look at our growth, how much of, as the population grows, this may get sent to that quota of the employee growth that we mentioned earlier, first day, we are, those numbers have ramped up. So from 77.2 budget employees to 83.6. So we guys have added, which is my country, you guys, we got a hundred and fifty. We are definitely growing, and as the mayor shared earlier, we're growing and we're losing, we're gaining and we're losing. It's not, I have a failed identifying solid statistics about reasons why or causes for that or even department-specific for that, it's kind of all spread out. But there's a loss every time that happens. Every time you create an employee, and more, you're investing in that employee. If they're a welcome employee, if they're even retired, there's that gap of knowledge that's about. So for 2020, again, we're talking about that workforce stacking and salary study, rolling that in and trying to get some experts to look at us globally without the buy-in of the, or without the lens that each individual department, but somebody from the outside looking in, what is happening, same thing. Try to continue to streamline paperwork process, bring in a new employee on board, it's about four hours to get a work. So try to streamline that, we have a software package that came with our online system, habit system to do that. Lots of HR things to work on, is to approve, everything, the background checks, policy updates, job descriptions, and, and, and some longer term goals. If the economy remains as it is or until it changes again on us, recruiting is just an issue. And it's not, not that people aren't a punk, we're getting applicants. What is missing from everybody's applicant pool is quality, I guess, right? Police department, they've got seven people who express an interest in coming to work for the city of Port Orchard. Four outside will fail the background check. So it's just getting the quality applicant, so we need to become an employer of, somebody wants to come to work. And that's, that's a big package, that's culture, that's salaries, that's benefits, that's where a good label city even care about you. That's the kind of big part.
Questions for Debbie before we, we're going to pause, this is a whole splinter ride, and we're going to get our, figure out our lunch.
Okay.
And then take a little bit of break. Talking about how you see it, and it's pretty tight.